25th, 2021. Um, do I have, um, I'm just gonna do a roll call. I want to make sure that all my commissioners are here. And they can hear us. So, um, we're just gonna do a little roll call. Let us know, okay?
Want me to?
Yeah, please.
Okay, Chairman Veale?
I'm here. Um, Commissioner Joycey?
Here.
I see her, I don't hear her.
I'm here.
And maybe I have to check my volume. Hold on one second. Volume's up. Can't hear anyone. So, hold on one second.
Ms. Juisty, it's Attorney Capola. Can you hear me? We're, we're getting some feedback from somebody.
Mr. Joycey, can you try talking again? Unmute and talk again?
I'm here.
Well, not hearing you. Hold on one second. Let's try to fix this. I'm on my computer audio. I just don't know what's happening. Yep.
Can you hear us?
Okay. Okay, let's see if this works. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, let's see if I can hear somebody.
Diane, can you say something again?
Something again.
Okay, still not hearing Diane. Okay? So, speaking. Let's try that one. Can you speak again, Diane?
Sure, I'm here.
Yay!
We got it.
Sorry, guys.
Um, we have, we have a lot of feedback. So, I think everybody needs to mute. Except unless they're speaking.
Okay, I'm gonna finish the roll call. I unmuted, but I think you do get a lot of feedback from the town hall. So, um, I'm gonna mute as much as, as possible from us. Um, so we know, um, Commissioner Joycey's on because she's been communicating with us. Um, Commissioner Rogan?
Present.
Commissioner Zigma? Is Commissioner Zigma on? I'm not seeing him on the line. Commissioner Wolman? Is Commissioner Wolman on the line? You may have to unmute your phone. Oh, we see, we see Commissioner Wolman. We're not hearing him. Commissioner Wolman, can you hear us? We see his name as participating. Um, Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner O'Brien? And you said he was asked to be excused? Commissioner O'Brien? Okay, so, excused.
I'm sorry.
Um, alternate, um, Steve Viala Jr.?
Yeah, I'm here.
Present. Um, alternate Peter Zarabozza?
Here.
And alternate Andrew Regnani?
Here.
Okay, so, um, Commissioner Wolman, please try to speak again if you can. Right now, you're muted.
Steve, are you there?
He's trying to talk.
Looks like Mr. Viala.
Oh, really? You saw something?
Yeah, I saw him.
Oh, his mute went off. You may have to check your, um, your volume settings, Steve.
Steve, it looks like to us that you're there, but we can't tell for sure. Um, because we can't hear you. While Steve's working the technical end of, uh, his side, um, let me just say that because we're, because John Michael and Tim Zigma are not here, um, let me seat for John Michael, Steve Viala Jr. Can I ask you to step up this evening? And also can, for Tim, for Tim Zigma, um, Peter Zarabozza? I'm gonna ask you to be seated this evening as well.
Okay.
Okay? All right, terrific. All right, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your patience. Um, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, uh, beyond technical difficulty at 7:10 in the evening. Uh, the first item that we have on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes for February 4th, 2021. The commissions, have you had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections or? Any comment on them?
Uh, Commissioner Joycey, I noted some errors.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Joycey.
Um, page three, near the top of the page. Uh, Commissioner Miller should be Millard.
Okay, yeah.
Um, in the second, in the same sentence, uh, second row, like should be likes.
Okay.
Halfway down the page, voting in opposition. Commissioner Zarabozza is improperly spelled.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, page four, the very top of the line.
Yes.
Um, committees meeting to average once a month. I think it's supposed to be once a month.
Yeah, I saw that too. Thank you. And did we miss anything else?
No, I think that was it.
Okay, terrific. All right, so will we, anyone else have any, um, typos that they saw or any corrections?
Welcome to the conference. Enter your access code or meeting number.
Whoa. Okay, hearing none. Do we have a, a motion to accept the minutes with the corrections?
I'll move to approve the minutes with the corrections suggested.
Okay, thank you, Diane. And do we have a second?
Second motion.
All right, second by Mr. Rogan. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 The commissioners seated, is there anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Um, next, we have a scheduling of a public hearing, which is a proposed amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations of Timothy Sullivan, Esquire, for new section 6G3E for gasoline filling stations. Now, um, we have a recommended date of March 18th, uh, 2021. Do we have a motion to schedule this for public hearing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for March 18th.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joycey. And do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Brian Rogan, seconds? Further discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Commissioner Business, you have a discussion of the Prism Autism Education and Consultation LLC at 166 Lincoln Street. Okay.
This is Maureen speaking, and I just wanted to remind anyone who is not speaking to please mute your, um, mute yourself because we're getting a lot of, like, paper noises and backgrounds. Um, you may also be getting background from here. I'm trying to eliminate that from this standpoint as well. Um, I just wanted to add on this. I'm sorry?
Maureen, this is Commissioner Wolman. I dialed in. I can't seem to get it through my laptop. Just wanna let you on here.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Do you wanna re?
No, we're, we're fine because we, we saw him on the screen. So, I did not, I s, I see this Steve Viala and Peter. Um, and that's for Tim Michael and Timothy Zigma.
Oh, okay.
There. But Steve Wolman is cool, so he's okay right now. You're good, Steve. Thank you.
Um, so, on the line, we have Attorney Greg Burton, who's representing the, uh, Prism Academy, as well as, I believe, he has the Prism Academy, um, uh, pit personnel on the line as well. And, um, I believe our attorney, Jennifer Capola, is also on the line if there are additional questions with regard to, to, to the application of the process. Um, you recall at the last meeting, um, we discussed that they're having a certificate of zoning compliance to locate Prism Academy at the former Moreland School on Moreland Road. And, um, there were some questions raised that we weren't able to answer. They were not participating in the meeting. It was a staff request at that meeting. So, they've now provided a letter, um, to further explain, um, the application for the certificate of zoning compliance, um, dated February 12th. That was distributed to all, but it can be won over further, as well as, um, Attorney Burton being on the line to, um, further discuss the application.
It, it would be helpful to the commission, I'm sorry, Greg Burton from Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and it's, excuse me, from Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy. Um, I'm happy to just provide a, a kind of a brief, you know, introduction and, and just give a little bit of information. That would be helpful to the commission.
That would be great. Please go ahead, Attorney Burton.
Great, happy to do it. Um, so again, my name's Greg Burton. I'm a partner with Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy in New Haven. I represent Prism Autism Education and Consultation LLC. The founders of Prism, Rebecca Giomati and Rachel Coburn are with us tonight, as well as Dr. John Moltini, who is the director of the Prism Academy within the Prism organization. Uh, we also have with us tonight, um, as our co-applicant, Moreland Hill School, Seth Brewer from Moreland Hill, and their counsel, Michael Carrier, of whoever Carrier Boys They Could Chase. So, the application that we submitted is an application for a certificate of zoning compliance. Uh, the property has historically been used as a school for Moreland Hill School and was used for that purpose of until about a year ago. And our proposed use is to continue to use it as a school. Uh, the property has a special permit for use as a school that was issued to it previously. Um, that, that permit runs with the land and continues to apply to the property. And so, we believe an appropriate situation for the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance for a like-for-like use. Um, let me turn it over for just a minute to Rachel and Rebecca, just to give you a brief introduction, uh, to Prism and what they do. Rachel and Rebecca?
Hi there. I'm Rebecca Coburn, uh, CEO and Director of Prism. Not sure if you can hear me or not. Let me know with the noise there. Okay. Um, as, as, I'll let Rebecca introduce herself and then I'll give a brief intro to our organization. I'm Rebecca Giomati, and I am the chief clinical officer and help founder at Prism America. Um, a brief background of our organization. We are an organization of autism professionals. Over 20 years of experience treating young children with autism. Right now, we have two centers here in Connecticut. We have one in Farmington and one in Guilford. Those, those two centers, we have licensed clinicians who use, uh, you, to oversimplify, we use, uh, like, a mainly play-based intervention to teach these young children, and that, uh, then reduces those core symptoms of autism. So, that's sort of like a earlier type of, um, education for them. Um, and these centers currently serve children ages zero to six, uh, six years old. Um, in these centers, we also have access to speech and occupational therapy for them as well. Greg, I know that you were going to maybe expand upon and talk a little bit more about the academy.
Uh, so, the, uh, the Prism Academy is the, is Prism's education program, uh, which is currently housed in its Farmington facility. So, uh, although Rachel was explaining that they primarily have their clinical, uh, programs there, they have started Prism Academy in that location, and it's grown to the point now that it needs to move to its own location. Uh, and so, Prism identified this property as being an ideal location for the academy. Uh, we have entered into a lease with the owner, with Moreland Hill School, to lease three classrooms and one auditorium. Uh, that will allow us to, to have about 12 students, initially up to 18 students in the Prism Academy. The ages of the students at Prism Academy, as Rachel was saying, they, they serve primarily zero to six. At the Farmington facility, Prism Academy will be, uh, children age six to nine in this initial program. Uh, we've leased these rooms, uh, from the building, and that's the only thing that we're applying for, for the certificate of zoning compliance, is just for the use of these three, uh, classrooms plus auditorium. But Prism does have a long-term plan, uh, to be at this building. And we also, in addition to the lease, have a contract to purchase the 166 Lincoln Street property. Uh, our plan is to secure financing, uh, for that, uh, program over the course of the next year, as well as to pursue some accreditations for the programs, uh, and to purchase that property within a year. And at that point, we will be able to expand Prism Academy into a full, uh, use of the property. Again, our certificate of zoning compliance is simply for this, um, the current use under the lease of the three classrooms plus auditorium. Uh, reason for that is that we, we simply don't know what the full school is going to look like at this point. Uh, that's what we're gonna be developing over the course of the next year. So, we don't know whether that will, for example, include improvements to the, to the building, changing of the facilities, changing of parking. You know, we don't know what those details will be. And so, at this time, it would be premature to, to come to the commission for any kind of approval. So, we're coming to the commission just for a certificate of zoning compliance to confirm that we are, you know, like-for-like use, uh, using it for a school for the, the current leased space. Um, there was one question that was raised by the commission at the last meeting, and I apologize that we weren't able to be at that meeting. Uh, we, we did get notice of it, but, but very short notice and weren't able, uh, to attend. But one of the questions that I know was raised at the last meeting was the question of licensing, and so I just wanted to talk to that for just a moment. Um, so, uh, for the commission's information, uh, private schools are not required to be licensed in the state of Connecticut. Uh, licensing is entirely voluntary. In fact, in order to seek, uh, a license from the state, which is really more of an accreditation, not a license you need to operate, but an accreditation by the state, you actually have to have already been operating for a year. That's one of the requirements for that application. Uh, Prism actually does intend to seek, uh, accreditation with the state. Uh, that will be related to kind of the long-term, uh, full-scale academy program that we're, we're hoping to have at 166 Lincoln. But that's not something that is, is in place at this time, nor is it something that's actually required. It's just something that we will pursue. And Prism is, has been very involved in research, uh, and learning and development of programs for education, uh, of children with autism with the state. And so, they're in regular communication with the, uh, Department of Education for the state. Um, the only thing I other, wanted to mention, and then, uh, and then, I'm happy to answer, we're happy to answer any questions, uh, that you may have, is just to highlight that the, the education programs that Prism has developed are cutting-edge in terms of the treatment and reduction of symptoms of autism and the education of children with autism. Obviously, a lot of these, uh, the kids that Prism serves, uh, would struggle in a traditional learning environment. And so, Prism has developed education programs that allow these children to access education that they couldn't access through, uh, through any traditional school, uh, program. The programs they developed are of interest to people across the country. Uh, there's only a few states that have programs similar to the ones that Prism has developed. And we expect that these programs will expand tremendously across the country in the coming years. So, this is a, an opportunity for the town of Berlin, um, to, to host, um, a really cutting-edge organization that not only provides phenomenal services that are desperately needed, um, but also creates jobs and will create a lot of energy for the town of Berlin. So, that's what we wanted to share with you. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, um, our chairman was speaking, but, um, she was muted. I'm sorry, we muted our mic. We're getting back, sorry.
Before we go into any discussion on this, or questions from the commissioners, I just wanna make note that Tim Zigma did join the meeting, uh, at the beginning of the presentation. I did not want to stop Attorney Burton from addressing us. Um, so I will ask that Peter Zarabozza, um, step down. And, um, Tim Zigma, you are now currently still with us, okay? All right, great. So, thank you to both. All right, go ahead, Diane.
Thank you. Could you please offer some clarification, um, with respect to, um, uh, this center being a school? Uh, and the reason that I ask is that I'm looking at the website for Prism, and there's a FAQ section on the website in which someone asks, "What certifications do your teachers have?" And the response on the website is that Prism is an intensive behavior analytic treatment center, not a special, not a special education school. All of our behavior technicians are required to maintain registered behavior technician certification with the behavior analyst certification board, or be actively working towards a higher level certification with the board. All of our clinicians are masters or doctoral-level board-certified behavior analysts.
Right. So, the, the Prism autism website is primarily focused around the autism center. And the autism center is the clinical facility, um, and that's what Rachel described at the outset. And so, that responds to that question is with respect to the autism center. Um, all of the teachers who are teaching as part of the Prism Academy program are certified teachers.
Uh, just to clarify, they are certified special education teachers. Yes, and I have one embarrassing clarification. It's unfortunately, our website was created in 2014. We are about three months into a complete website revamp that will include the academy, which is a newer program for us, as Greg mentioned. Yes, as well as our Guilford location. Yes. Also, the Guilford location, yes. Great question.
Any other commissioners have a question at this point? I guess I, I have one concern, and I'm not sure Attorney Burton, if you wanna address this matter, but, um, when you talk about, uh, the licensing, you say that the private school is not required to have a licensing of the state, but you are anticipating that after a year of operation, you are going to seek that licensing. So, with a facility like this, if you had chosen, after a year, not to pursue the licensing, who would oversight the school? Who would look into, uh, the curriculums or, or, I mean, how would this school be managed?
Uh, so, so that's a, that's a question perhaps for the Department of Education. Um, the Department of Education doesn't require licensing for private schools. And so, uh, you know, I can't really speak to why the Department of Education and why the legislature doesn't require, um, private school licenses, but they don't. Um, Prism intends to seek that license because it does signify that you, you have met certain requirements of the state, um, and so Prism will be securing that accreditation. It's simply not a legal requirement, and therefore, you know, can't be a determinative factor as to whether, um, a school is a school. But all the teachers will be licensed, uh, as, as we said, actually, all the teachers that teach at Prism Academy are licensed teachers. And so, there is oversight, um, just, you know, for, for that consideration. Uh, there is oversight of the teachers insofar as all of the teachers are licensed special education teachers, and so they have to maintain their licensure requirements.
Okay, I think you just answered my question. Thank you. And, and one other point, I mean, the last time we met, I, I was under the assumption that the facility at Farmington was going to remain in Farmington, and that this was just going to be something that would be dovetailing onto it. But, um, looking over your correspondence, it seems that you are actually looking to, uh, consolidate and move the facility to Berlin.
Yeah, so, so not exactly. The, the Prism Academy program, as Prism has developed that program, they have developed it in their Farmington location because the practical reality is that's the only facility that they, they had at the time. The Guilford, uh, clinical facility has now opened as well, but the Prism Academy program was incubated in the Farmington, uh, facility, and it's now grown beyond its incubation, and so it's time to find its permanent home. Uh, and so what we're doing is we're relocating the, the Prism Academy program, not the Farmington location. The Farmington clinical location will remain as it is. We're just taking the Prism Academy, now that it's been incubated there, uh, and moving it to its long-term home, uh, hopefully, in Berlin.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other commissioners with questions or concerns?
This is Commissioner Zigma.
Yes, sir.
You, uh, said that you are going to start with the gym area and some other places here, uh, a minimum amount of students, uh, and then expand from that point, uh, and can become the full-fledged school that you're hoping for. Uh, is there a problem on your part if this, uh, what you're seeking here is the certification, uh, is granted, but in phases as the school grows? So, if you're going to make, uh, site improvements or school improvements or whatever, that you would have to come back to this commission as you expand, basically?
Yes, you know, we, we don't have any, we don't have any expectation that this will be a, you know, a sort of incremental growth. There's no expectation that, that that's the plan. And frankly, we don't have the agreements in place to do that. We have only leased this one area of the building. And then, our long-term, uh, contract is to purchase the entire building. So, as it stands, our legal agreements are such that we have the current space and then the whole shooting match, nothing in between. So, we don't anticipate that there would be any kind of incremental change. However, if circumstances changed and we did have an expansion plan, then, then those expansions, yes, we would have to come back to the zoning staff and to the, to the commission, to the extent, uh, involved in the, the permit, and seek the appropriate permit. So, that might be a certificate of zoning compliance, if, if there's no changes to the facility or the, or the footprint or anything like that. Uh, or it may be some other type of approval, depending on what that expansion looks like. Uh, for example, if we were going to expand the footprint of the building, obviously, that's a very different approval than a certificate of zoning compliance.
Joan, this is Commissioner Millard.
Uh, yes, George.
Um, just a quick question, I guess, in wanting you to succeed and be successful, do you have an, uh, an option on the building or a commitment from the current owner not to lease out the other part of the building to someone else and kind of follow your plans?
So, we have a purchase contract to purchase the entire building. So, we're entitled to purchase the building. Um, it is possible that, uh, that, that a portion of the building could be leased out, you know, on a short-term basis, uh, but we do have a, a legal contract to purchase the property.
Okay, and is there a timeframe associated with that? Does that expire?
It's a one-year. It's a one-year. Yeah, it's a one-year timeframe. And that's, and we wanted to share that with the commission because we wanted to give you a sense of what our, our timing is on that, uh, twofold. One is that we didn't want... One is that we didn't want, you know, we didn't want anybody to have the impression that we're just looking for some kind of short-term space. Prism is looking to make a very significant long-term investment in the property. But we need to, we, our, our current program has grown beyond the confines of what we can, what we can manage in Farmington. And so we need to move it to the, the location Berlin now with, with this initial area. And then, you know, and then we'll continue our, our plan for the longer term.
Terrific. Any, any other questions, George, or?
Um, I, I don't know if I saw it anywhere. Is, is there an expected date when you would be opening? Just curiosity.
I'll let Rachel answer that, but if we're granted the certificate of zoning approval, zoning compliance, maybe within a week, Rachel, is that about right?
Yes, sir. As soon as we can get someone in to clean it out and in a little paint refresh, be there in a matter of days where possible. We've been waiting for a long time. We're bursting at the seams and our students are quite ready for an environment that's more suited for their school age rather than preschool age. And that's where we're really seeing the need to move them quickly into the right environment.
And one of the things too, and we've been, we've, we've been, we've been pushing really hard to move this process along. And, and that's not, that's not impatience on, on our part, on our own behalf. That's our impatience on behalf of the kids that are on our waiting list. We have kids, we have a, a long waiting list of kids that are waiting to get into programs. And we need the physical space to house those programs. So our, our, our impatience in the process is, is on behalf of the kids.
Okay, thank you.
That being said, what do you, once you do your, I'm sorry?
Commissioner Veale?
Yes, I'm not sure who.
I think that was Steve Womack speaking. Did we, did we hear Steve? I'm gonna mute.
Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. It's, it's a little sketchy, but we can hear you. I've got to mute so that we can, so that we don't interfere with you.
Okay, so I, I've had experience on this end with nonprofits and people who do the type of things that these folks are looking to do. And it, it is pretty much a like-for-like transition for me, knowing what they're doing there. It's pretty much the same thing that the private Moreland School was doing. This is a private school. And the things they do for these people with autism are truly spectacular. You'd be amazed to see what happens. So I think what these guys are trying to do i- is, is a benefit. And I think it fits our, our zoning there with what the school was used for in the past. Thank you.
I, I believe our town attorney, Jennifer Capola, is on as well for this meeting. And I just have a question for, for you, counselor. Can you please confirm that, in moving forward with this, that we're not going to be in conflict with the certificate of zoning compliance? Or do you see any issues with that?
Men in white, Madam Chairman, Jennifer Capola, your counsel for the record. In, in conflict with what respects?
Procedurally, I believe she's asking if procedurally there would be a conflict with this being granted through a certificate of zoning compliance, confirming that this process is appropriate.
No, no, the, the process is fine. And ultimately, I gave the advice in speaking with attorney Burton that I felt it was necessary that you hear from this proposed tenant of this property as to their use. And that's, and that's why they're here, because we wanted to make sure that the special permit that is currently in place, that, that their use was, was obviously a school use. And that's ultimately why they came before you. It's not that I questioned, you know, the fact that, that it was an appropriate path that they were seeking to take. It was simply because in discussing the matter with Maureen and also with attorney Burton, we thought that you would want to weigh in on it and hear what was going in there and have an understanding and be able to weigh in on the use itself and learn about the use and make sure that you were comfortable with her issuing the certificate of zoning compliance. I have no concerns with regard to the process being followed.
Commissioner Veale, this is Commissioner Ms. Millard.
Yes.
I, I guess I'm going back to the original letter. I'm just wondering if all the issues had been resolved with regards to, I thought it was the town's assertion from a tax perspective that the special permit was, had expired because the school was not in existence for six months. It reverted over to a not-for-profit piece of property to, to a regular commercial or industrial, commercial piece of property, taxes were due. So there was that big argument going on about that. So does a specially, special, what am I talking about here? That, does that clause still enforce that it is a special use type of deal? Or did it expire?
You've heard, you've heard from attorney Burton on that.
Well, I'm looking to hear from our counsel on that. I know, I know what attorney Burton said. It was his opinion based on citing some court cases that it wasn't true. I'm looking for Berlin, Berlin's attorney to weigh in on the matter. I, I just want to make sure we're not going down a path that's going to bite us at, at a point later on. I'm not, not in favor of this. I just want to make sure we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's. We got to the issue and whether also that tax argument has been, you know, rectified with the, the owner of the property.
You're raising your hand. Go ahead and speak, and then I will comment.
Sorry, yeah, I just, I'm sorry, so this is Greg Burton again. I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to sort of maybe separate the two issues. So the question of the, of the tax appeal that's pending, that has no bearing. There's no connection between that, which is a separate matter. That's a matter of property tax and whether, whether property is subject to tax. And that is based on use and a variety of other things. But that's totally separate and apart from the zoning certificate, whether or not the zoning certificate is granted. So I just want to be clear, from our perspective, granting the, the certificate of zoning compliance has no impact, positive or negative, with respect to the resolution of the tax appeal. That's an entirely separate legal matter, not affected by the zoning certificate of compliance.
So my question to our attorney is whether the special permit expired? In, in, in addition to a zoning certificate, we have to issue a special permit? Or is a special permit still hold over? Again, the early correspondence was a claim by the town that it had expired and was no longer in, in effect.
Yes.
I just want to make sure you have the right paperwork, the right, you know, permits and whatever to make sure and nobody comes back at us on that.
So, so the, I'm, I'm getting so much feedback, I'm sorry. So I'm getting words and bits and parts. I think that you're questioning attorney Burton's statement that the special permit runs with the land. The law is that it does run with the land. We have, we have not taken an evidence with regard to sufficient abandonment of the use that I have heard or seen based upon the information that's been provided.
Okay, any other questions or comments or concerns?
Mr. Edge had a letter that he asked me to read.
Okay, Mr. Edge had a letter that he had submitted. So we're going to have our secretary, Brian Rogan, read that. Just a second, because Maureen wants to chime in.
I just want to clarify that that was Jennifer Capola with that last response. Because I'm not sure it's clear to everyone right now who's speaking. And a reminder just to everyone to make sure that they identify themselves when they're speaking just because it's very difficult to take the minutes. Thanks. We don't see everybody on the screen right now.
Okay.
This is a letter from our Economic Development Director. February 16th, 2021, Chairman John Veale. Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission, 240 Crescent in Rude, Berlin, Connecticut, 0607. Lead Prism Autism Education and Constellation, Derek Chairman and Vealian Commission members. I am writing as Economic Development Commission. I'm writing as the Economic Development Commission to discuss Prism Autism Education in consultation at a February meeting last week. We had a nice discussion with Rebecca, Diane Meadie, and Rachel Coburn and attorney Greg Burton. They gave an overview of the work that Prism does at their apartment location and how they planned a very novel and vital school at the location of Moreland Health School. The commission had a number of questions and seemed to be very happy with the potential of having a specialized school for those with autism in Berlin. They did make a motion to recommend Prism for the property of 166 Lincoln Street as it is an economic driver, will create good jobs. They provide positive trust to the town of Berlin through their work. Their methods are cutting-edge and it will be used as a school, which is not seen in many places in Connecticut or the Northeast. The motion was approved, six votes to zero, with none of stating. I was able to visit their location in Farmington a few weeks ago as I was curious to learn more about what they were looking to do and how they presently operate. I was impressed as they had different classrooms for different age children. It was not your traditional classroom as some children with autism cannot sit in a chair for many hours at a time. It was set up so that the children were, they were able to do work in areas where they were most in need, whether it be vocalization and tactile work or more traditional desktop learning. As a father of a son with autism, I know firsthand how organizations like Prism can, can and have helped my family and my son. I believe they will be a great addition to Berlin. Sincerely, Christopher Edge, Economic Development Director.
Okay, thank you, Brian. All right, um, any other commissioners with questions or concerns regarding this application or regarding this discussion?
Chairman Veale, Steve Viala Jr.?
Yes, Steve.
I'd just like to comment, somebody actually having autism, being on the autism spectrum. If I had this in my backyard when I was in school, this, this would be a life changer for me. So this really hits home for me, so thank you guys for your thought.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? So I guess that's, all right, so we're going to go ahead with a consensus then? A consensus vote on this application or this discussion? I keep saying application, but it's a discussion. Yeah, all right. And what would you, how would you word that?
Just that, this is Maureen speaking, that the commission has a consensus that this can be handled through a certificate of zoning compliance administered by staff with any, with the notations as discussed there and presented by the applicant.
Okay, all right. So we're going to continue with the consensus, so go ahead.
Chairman Veale?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorsey?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ziegma?
Aye.
Commissioner Womack?
Aye.
Commissioner Millard?
Aye.
And Commissioner, who's seated?
Viala.
Commissioner Viala? Thank you. I'm sorry, I.
That's okay. All right, so that, the motion carries. And so we're looking forward to a great relationship that will be starting here in Berlin, the autism school or academy, I should call it, right? And I wish you great luck and great success.
Thank you very much to the commission. We appreciate your time and your support. And we look forward to opening up in Berlin.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you all.
Yes, all right, thank you. Good night. All right, next up for our discussion is the discussion of the 2023 Plan of Conservation and Development. You know, when we put this on the agenda, we figured that we wouldn't be so heavy-handed and have some time to talk. But I would say that there's really, at this point, not much to update the commission with. Because we have a full agenda tonight, I'm going to ask that we move this discussion off to the next meeting. This way we can do a little bit more research and we can move on with our agenda tonight, okay? Going on to the new business, site plan amendment of Murphy Road Recycling for 36,900 square foot building addition. Truck scale house at map 3-4, block 76A, lot 1C, and map 3-2, block 76A, lot 1B, 655 Christian Lane. Yes, Maureen?
I just want to let everyone know that with the delay of this meeting from last week to this week, the zoning board of appeals met in the meantime. And therefore, the applicant has secured a variance of the building coverage from the zoning board of appeals. And the, the decision and notice are being prepared. So they've got that, so now this commission can move forward with, with hearing deciding whatever you choose to do. No longer has to wait for a variance.
So they blessed the project. Excellent. Okay, so do we have anyone here speaking for the applicant? I'm not sure who we have online.
Yes, my name is Mark Justin. I'm with Barton and La Judas Consulting Engineers. We prepared the site plans on behalf of Murphy Road Recycling and Christian Lane Realty, the, the owner and the operator of the facility. With me here also Jonathan Murray, I think, is still online, the operations manager for the company.
Yeah, I'm here too.
Terrific and welcome. Okay.
Thank you.
What do we have here?
I'll try and clear my screen here. Works. This is the site plan. Anchor, which is part of Barton and La Judas, originally started working on the site in 2007 when Murphy Road Recycling, the operator, took over. So Jonathan has been the director of operations for most of that time. So what we're proposing is a 36,900 square foot addition to basically infill, which is what is essentially a courtyard. There are two, there's a canopy here in the middle of what we're proposing and a small building over here, which would be removed. And so, and the whole thing would form one large continuous structure to house state-of-the-art recycling equipment. Part of, part of the site plan would also be to remove the scale to the north of the building and install a new scale closer to the northerly driveway. The arrows that you see around the site would be the traffic pattern for the, both the trucks bringing recyclable materials and those that are picking up the processed recyclable materials. So the trucks would come in off, coming from the south, which Diamond Road would be to the south of this, up Christian Lane, turning into the site, go around the building. Those that are dropping off materials would, would come up into this area and back into the existing area, the same place that single stream recyclables are dropped off now. Then they would, after they've dropped off the recyclable material, they would exit back around, go over the outbound scale, and then exit back to Christian Lane. Those trucks that are picking up materials, for the most part, would come in, get weighed, go around the building, come over to this area, back into this loading dock and be loaded primarily with bales of materials, whether those are plastics, there's a variety of plastics that are sorted here, aluminum, metal, anything that you would put into your single stream recycling bin. Also coming in here is some amount of source separated, as we call it, cardboard and paper, which would also be processed in, in the building. As those, all of these materials have been accepted at this site for quite some time. And as was early, mentioned earlier, the current lot area coverage limit is 35% and we obtained a variance to go to 38%. So basically, the company's investing quite a bit of money to install a complete new sort line and improve the efficiency of its recycling operations here. Jonathan, I are here to answer any other questions you may have about it.
I can just say, you know, we've been doing this at this property since 2007, like Mark has said. And we're really not looking to change anything. But over the years, recycling has changed and the end market quality has had to improve. So we need to put in some state-of-the-art equipment. The equipment we're looking to install is about a $25 million investment, not including the building, to allow us to make. the building, to allow us to make products from recycling like you put at your household on the curb in order to improve it, to make a good quality product to go to end markets. So it's really just a requirement to really meet the needs of, of the ever changing recycling business.
All right, terrific, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions at this point regarding this proposal?
Commissioner?
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, uh, I got a question. Of course, this facility had enough fires in there.
Tim? Tim, can you just lean forward because you're really faint on the line, you're too far away from your mic.
Okay.
Thank you, try that.
Ow, okay. Uh, this facility had the fires over the years in it and I wanted to make sure that the fire marshal reviewed this and what fire suppression systems are go put into this new addition. And I know that behind the building, I would say to the north of the building, there is a hydrant out in the field out there that is a New Britain Fire, New Britain hydrant. But I want to make sure that access to that hydrant stays open. There was a fence going across there if I remember correctly and there should be access to that fire hydrant because the, the fire hydrants on Christian Lane is a different water line than the one that's in the back of the building. So we have two water lines for, for that building.
Um, I can answer, we do have fire hydrants on property in addition to having a dry fire suppression system on the site that will be expanded into this new building. But we've also added, uh, over the last couple of years, a fire rover system and it's throughout the building and it's a monitor 24 hours a day for heat detection. If there is a high heat determined in the building, the company goes on to cameras, they locate if there's a fire and they're able to pinpoint the fire and put it out with extinguishing agent. And so we have really three means of fire control there with the onsite hydrants, the fire suppression system, and this new addition with the 24 hour monitoring with, by live, by live staff.
Okay, so.
Fire. I'm sorry, just for the record, I know that Commissioner Zigma asked the question, but I'm not sure who answered that. Was that Mark Jessen or Jonathan?
I'm sorry, that was Jonathan Murray, the director of operations for Murphy Road Recycling.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I just want to make sure our record is right.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure there's access to that fire hydrant that's in the triangle piece of the property in the rear, uh, coming out of New Britain.
Okay, I, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm, I believe, I'm not unaware of where it comes out of, I know it's active, but we can, we can, we can look into that.
Okay, is there's one, is there somebody else who wishes to address the commission?
This is, as Jonathan says, there are public fire hydrants on site, one, one right near the, uh, the southerly driveway at, at Christian Lane and one in the south center of the site within the fence line of this facility, right about the center of where the new building is on the, along the fence.
Yes, I do realize those are there, uh, but again, uh, to the northern side of the property, there, there was a hydrant in this triangle piece of property that they're not using, uh, supplied water from the city in New Britain. Different, different system totally and the fires that were there came into water supply many times. So I just want to make sure that second water supply is available.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I have a question, if I may. The triangle piece that appears to be for storage of vehicles, uh, that's adjacent to your proposal, your proposed build out, is that, are you going to be removing those? It looks like trailers, the overhead, are you gonna be removing those trailers or what's gonna happen with that piece? I mean.
As, as per the zoning variance, we're going to combine the two parcels, so it'll be one big parcel. And those storage trailers are used for storage of material, but also for, they're empty trailers because we need to move material with them. So it's really a, a parking lot for trailers. It would remain that.
Okay, is that gonna be screened at all or from the roadway?
You really can't see it from the roadway because of the building, I think it's body coat on that side. And then our building blocks it also. You might, you could see it from the rail yard, railroad, but you can't really see it from any other piece.
Okay, so it's just going to, it's just gonna be for storing trailers there, tractor trailer or whatever, or shipping containers?
Correct. This is Jonathan again, sorry.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. Maureen, okay. Anyone else from the commission? Commissioners, any other comments?
I think someone, this is Maureen, I think somebody needs to mute their speaker. I'm hearing background.
All right, so Maureen, as far as staff is concerned, are there any issues that you wanted us to consider at this time as well?
Um, I, we don't have any specific issues other than those raised erosion control and site bonding as required as the plan goes through the permitting system. The engineering did specifically ask for the Abtec Industries Ultra Urban Filters with Spark Sponge technology in the site catch basins, um, per the inland comments through our engineering department. As I said, the parcels, or as he presented rather, the parcels will be removed, will be merged as proposed. Just noting that any change to signage for the facility does require separate permitting in conformance with the regulations and that the, the site, we suggest the site pavement markings be deliberately laid out and clearly updated. That was something that was done previously with our applications as they've come before, previously before the commission and specifically this time as the, the flow of traffic is going to change again. It was reversed once before, now it's gonna be reversed again. Any other department comments? And, and just the plans come in according to our plans. I will comment that they are adding square footage to the building, so the commission should determine if the parking, which they're not proposing to expand, but they're showing on their plan as what they currently use, and I believe he presented as, um, the bulk of the building come, um, being for equipment as opposed to personnel. But bless you, the commission should determine whether or not the parking, the existing parks, parking remains adequate for this use.
Okay, all right, thank you, Maureen. And, all right, so going around one more time, any other commissioners have any comments or anything?
It sounds like Commissioner Rogan, it sounds like that addition is going to be mostly for mechanics and equipment, that I would say that the parking wouldn't be sufficient because they're not adding personnel.
Yeah. And there's no residential impervious surface that's being proposed, everything's gonna be caught in the scene. Can I, can I just ask a question about the addition itself as far as the roofing goes? What type of roofing is gonna be proposed for the building?
Right now, we're proposing a membrane roof for the addition.
Okay, can you explain to the commission what that, or to the public, should I say, what that would be?
It'd be a, a rubber membrane over the top of insulation, like you see on many buildings around it, so it's really just a rubber membrane roof for last, it'll last a long time.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Zigma.
Yes, Mr. Zigma.
If that triangle area is going to be parking for trailers or empty trailers or whatever type of vehicles you go put in there, uh, that, is that gonna be stoned now? Or tarred or what, how's that gonna be treated?
This is Jonathan Murray again. That parking lot is currently gravel, hard pack gravel, and proposing that it would stay that.
This is Maureen, yeah, this is Maureen speaking, um, for clarification, um, I looked back at the previous approvals to, because they had labeled their plan as existing trailer storage, um, at, at least the last site plan approval that was approved as existing storage. So that was, has been the trailer storage yard in existence for some time, it's not a new, um, a, a change to the plan from this use, I believe. If I understand correctly, there's no change from what was previously approved for that area. The applicant might want to confirm that, if they're expanding it or changing it in any way.
This is Jonathan Murray again, we are not changing, expanding or changing it in any way, we're just using it the way it has been used.
And I just have one more, one last question about that, that parking triangle with the trailers there. Do these trailers move at all or are these just basically obsolete material that's just on the job site? They rotate through?
Uh, this is Jonathan Murray again, they, they move, they're actively used, so we, we have customers that we put trailers out at, so we, we have to have empty ones there to go to, to swap out, so we will, they are used.
Okay, all right. I guess my concern is that if you had antiquated equipment and it was on gravel and it started to leak or ooze, you know, all sorts of elements from the engine or, or from the gear shafts or whatever, you could have quite the mess there and it could become troublesome. But it's good to know that those trailers are constantly being rotated out and it's not just, you know, like, you know, a dead zone for these things.
Correct.
All right, terrific. Any other commissioners have questions or do we have any feelings about this proposal for us?
I have a notion to make a motion.
Oh, okay, all right, let me just, is everyone all good? All right, okay, go ahead, Brian.
I will make the motion to approve the site plan amendment with staff comments.
Okay, terrific, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second Diane Dorsey.
All right, thank you Diane. So further discussion, commissioners? Do we have to go through, we'll do what we'll call because of the Zoom thing.
Chairman Veale?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorsey?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Zigma?
Aye.
Commissioner Wollman?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
And Commissioner Beella Jr.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Steve. All right, so the motion moves, the site plan, okay. Well, good luck.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your support.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, bye bye.
We know you've done a good job over there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, on to the public hearings, because this is actually continued, because this has already been opened, we won't have a call for the public hearing, which Brian, our secretary Brian Rogan is thrilled about. So item one is a zone change request, are we going to be combining these?
Yeah, no, we didn't combine.
We can't combine, do I need a motion to combine?
They've already been combined from the last hearing.
Okay.
Um, to be considered together, when, when you go to make a decision, they'll have to be voted upon separately, but, um, the record will be combined so that you don't have to forget what's said on one to vote on the other.
Okay, terrific. All right, so we have the zone change request of the BT 2008 LLC to change the zone at 404 Berlin Turnpike. And we also have a special permit site plan application of BT 2008 LLC for mixed use development at 404 Berlin Turnpike. And I'm not gonna read through the maps and all the other block numbers because I think it'll make people dizzy.
Can I just clarify for the record that it is several parcels altogether as in the call that has been read? So it's not, 404 refers to a single parcel, lot 12, and it's associated parcels around that as well, are all concluded, included in the application.
Okay, terrific, thank you. All right, so let's hear from, um, our friends here regarding the zone change and the special permit use in the presentation, yes, Maureen?
So if I can, I believe that the, and, and your choice as to how to proceed, we received the consultant third party review, um, comments, um, and that was anticipated to be presented at the meeting that was a week ago, um, for the applicant then to respond. The applicant has provided some response to those comments that were distributed today, so some of you may have them already, otherwise they'll be presented, I'm assuming they'll be presented tonight as well, as far as the response to the, um, to the comments received so far. So I guess it's up to the commission as to determining who speaks first.
Okay, um, let's have the, let's have the developer give their overview and this way then we will then dovetail onto our consultants and receive their feedback and then we'll go to staff or whatever comments. Okay, so.
Commissioner Veale, this is Commissioner Miller.
Yes, George.
I, I've gone through a lot of the stuff that Maureen sent out and the responses from the developer, you know, kind of mirror question by question what the consultants did. So having the consultants go through all of it and then having the developer go through all the answers, they're, they're one for one answers on every point that the consultants made, so it would be, it would be redundant. So it really can be covered by the, the developer's responses to the consultant's remarks.
Okay.
Unless the consultants round up, say something, but again, I, I think it's redundant.
Yeah, all right, that's quite well taken, I'm just, I'm concerned that perhaps everyone hasn't had a chance to look through the information yet, so I wasn't quite sure what the rest of commissioners, I know you are right on top of this, George, and that's great.
Well, I mean, I mean, some of it is very detailed engineering, especially from WMC. I don't, I'm not sure it means a whole lot to us to hear just the points made separately without the answer to it also.
Okay.
Because that would raise the questions about whether we think the answers to the, the findings are, are, are good answers or not.
Okay, so your proposal is we just go right to the responses to the questions raised by the consultants then, so that would.
There's, I don't know what the developer was planning to do tonight, but I mean, if he's going to respond to all the points that the two developers made, I would say do that and then there are some places here where I would turn to the consultant and say, are you in agreement with that? In, in most cases, 80, 90% of what they're doing, they're both in sync, but there's a couple of places where they differ in opinion and there's a couple of places that say that we'll, we'll consider that in the future and I'd like to know how those things are gonna be handled. So working in con, in tandem with one another, I think would be the best use of our time, but that's my opinion.
Okay, all righty, and how does the rest of the commission feel about that? I'm trying to.
Commissioner Dorsey, I'm fine with that, anything to make the process efficient, I'm fine.
Yes, alright. So, no, okay.
As long as we know the consultant's information or their question and the response of the developer. I don't care who, who does both, but as long as we, we understand both.
Okay, well then let's take Mr. Miller's suggestion to heart then. I think we, we all agree that we would like to, yes, I see that, Mr. Poland? Who I agree with.
Chair, Chair Wallman, I'm one of your consultants. I'm totally for efficiency, and I don't have an issue with however you choose to proceed. I'd just like to make it clear, just because the applicant responded to our quest, to our comments as consultants, that we may still have questions ourselves, or concerns ourselves, or differences of opinion. So I just want to make sure that you're prepared to also allow us to further elaborate.
Oh, yes, indeed, of course. And in fact, one of the correspondence we received was today as well. I have not had a chance to go through it. But I'm, and I'm sure that some of the other commissioners haven't had a chance to get it. Apparently it was brought up. It was published on the website this afternoon, after being received, so yes. Alright, so in the process of streamlining the process, we'll go ahead to the, I guess the applicant to see how he responds to the developers. I mean, to the, to the consultants and the issues raised. Do we have Mr., is it Mr. Diaddio? Is he online?
Madam, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
This is Attorney Peter Alter.
Oh, there you are, Attorney Alter. Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In addition to hearing from me this evening, Attorney Megan Hope of our law firm Alter and Pearson is also here. Mr. Diaddio, who's the developer. Matt Bruton is our project engineer at BL Companies. Mark Joyce is our architect, and Scott Hesketh is our traffic engineer. And our plan was to work our way through the consultants' memos and to indicate the manner in which we've addressed the issues raised, as well as to speak to several other items. And, and so I think that the commission's approach and ours should be in sync. And we certainly recognize and appreciate further comments by the consultants as well. So I think we're in, we're all in agreement as to how to proceed. I did want to update the commission a little bit. We have an application pending before the zoning board of appeals on the approval of the site for the gas station, filling, gasoline filling station. And that matter has been deferred pending a decision by the town planning and zoning commission. The zoning board of appeals wanted to be satisfied that this commission had had the opportunity to review and act on the application before it acted. The, just to refresh everyone's recollection, this is a thirty-five and a half acre site on the Westerly side, southbound side of the Berlin Turnpike, consists of a total of three parcels. I had prepared a long recitation of the opportunities and responsibilities that a commission has with respect to a zone change. And unfortunately for me, Dr. Poland did a much better job of it than, than I ever could in, in his report. And I only want to say that in respect to his analysis of the zone change and what's required of the commission in terms of its considerations, that I completely agree with the manner in which he approached it, and also agree with the analysis that he did in terms of considering the comprehensive plan of zoning for the town of Berlin, as well as your plan of conservation and development. And in terms of analyzing that, I think that all of the points that he makes in, in his report are, are well-made. I agree with his conclusions, and I also agree with his approach to the analysis. So I won't redo what he's done, except to say that I, I certainly adopt his manner of analysis, and I agree with his ultimate conclusion, which is that it would be appropriate for the commission to consider approving the zone change to the overlay zone as, as the first step in this application process. We did have an excellent opportunity to meet with your town staff. Maureen helped us arrange a meeting. We, we had a Zoom meeting with Dr. Poland. We went over the plans in detail. We had the opportunity to have some good feedback back and forth. Staff had the opportunity to have some input as well, and as a result of that, when we got the written reports from both Dr. Poland and WMC, we've been able to respond to those very, very affirmatively, I think. I think your consultants did an excellent job of analyzing a very complex proposal. And we've arrived at a plan, I think, that satisfies many, if not all, of the concerns that were expressed. Our plan is to have first Matt Bruton go through changes to the site plan, some of which reflect Dr. Poland's comments, some of which resulted from WMC's analysis. Then Mark Joyce, our architect, will discuss changes in the architecture that have been made since the last time we were before you. Again, as a result of a further analysis and input from Dr. Poland in particular. And then finally, Scott Hesketh, our traffic engineer, will speak to the status of the traffic. As you know, this is a state highway and ultimately is under the control and direction of the DOT. So with that, what I'm going to do is ask Matt to walk you through the analysis that we did and the, and the implications to the plans that you previously were introduced to. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thanks, Peter. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, Peter.
Can you, you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect, sorry. Just want to make sure I wasn't on double mute here. I'm using my phone. Do I have the ability to share my screen? We do have a, a slide presentation that I think would go along visually with what I'm going to speak to. Great, thank you. So the commission members, these are similar slides that we presented earlier on at our first hearing last month. And these have been updated in accordance to the three letters that we had received. So as a reminder, we did get three comment letters, one from WMC, your consulting engineer, one from Dr. Poland, your planning consultants, and then one from your public works slash town engineer as well. So the site plan you see colored here overall is updated to reflect those comments. Just as a reminder, the Berlin Turnpike is diagonally on the right-hand side of the screen, and it's being traced by my mouse right now. The thick red line is the overall property boundary. What we are proposing is the colored section of the plan, that would be the proposed development. As you can see, shoved in the northeast corner closest to the Berlin Turnpike. I mean, if I zoom in a little bit further, this is a, a blow-up of that area to focus, again, full access driveways along the frontage, along, along with a right-in, right-out limited access driveway. We do have the convenience and gas proposal along the southern end, southern side. The retail developments in the middle and the hotel to the north with the appropriate residential community to the rear. The, oops, seconds. This is just a reiteration of the parking and zoning tables that have been updated based on the comments received by the applicants. And I'm going to jump to another plan right now to walk through some of the changes. So this is the overall site plan, non-colored version. And I'll just, I'll just hit the high level, high points from all the comments that were addressed as part of the civil site plans, which BL was responsible for. Quickly, the town engineer's comments were in relation to.
Hey Matt.
Events related.
Yeah, Matt, the, the screen, at least the one I'm seeing is, is still the overall site plan. There it goes. I think there's a, it's just a delay.
Yep, okay.
Thanks.
No problem. I will zoom in as I talk about each point. So the, your department, your Department of Public Works Director's comments, there were two in relation to two items. One was in relation to the existing pump station, which is this triangular piece that falls around our development. As part of this proposal, we are asking for cross-access for the driveway connecting the convenience store and service station to the other portion of the site. I briefly highlighted that crossing in yellow. And as part of that, there's also some proposed future expansions by the town to the pump station, which is roughly highlighted in yellow. Attorney Hope and Alter have prepared draft even documents along with a plan from BL to address those items that, that was required. So those were part of his response. The other was a note to make the applicant aware of the potential odors associated with the pump station. And as the applicant has owned this piece of property for several years, he is aware of that issue, and no concern at this point. Going to the next consulting letter from WMC. As, as pointed out wisely by one of your commission members, very heavy technical letter in regards to the review of this application. There are a lot of overlapping points that were made by Dr. Poland on his planning letter. So I'm going to hit the highlights of those as well and walk you through the changes that are reflected on this site plan. Several WMC's comments are regarding construction phasing, sediment and erosion control. Was also a request an issuance of a bond. For those that have reviewed the letter so far, we are almost in lockstep agreement with the, the request of those items. There are also a variety of comments regarding stormwater management. This is revisions of some of the components of the system, and conflicts with the system with some of the utilities, and also some upgrades to sanitary system, and adding of more detail in relation to the residential buildings and the stormwater management system. For example, depicting roof leaders and items of that. Another item that was discussed in part, as part of WMC's letter is the OSTA and CONDOT permitting that is required. And I will, I will say we responded to those, and Scott Hesketh, our traffic engineer, can elaborate a little bit more at, at his point during this presentation. Another item that was discussed by WMC is snow removal. The applicant does propose to have snow operation, operation equipment on-site to clear the area for residents. And as further along, you'll see here, there is ample, excuse me, landscaping areas to provide snow, snow storage on sites. And this has been further expanded by the reduction of parking as well. So I'm just going to go through some of the items here, kind of point by point. They have also requested dumpsters and dumpster enclosures, so I'm going to point out some of those on the plan. So there's dumpster enclosure added along here for the hotel space. We've also added dumpster locations here for these residential units. And there's also dumpster locations around here for these residential units south. We've also relocated the convenience store dumpster enclosure as well, which I just put a yellow dot on. In addition to that, they've asked for fencing around the basin with gate access, which is the, in relation to the stormwater management basin that is circled here in yellow. They've also asked for information regarding the water connection for this development to the twenty-inch pressure concrete pipe that is in the Berlin Turnpike. As part of our ongoing discussions with the town, it is our understanding that the, the section of concrete pressure pipe along the frontage of this property will be upgraded at some point this year to allow a seamless connection to this proposed project and other future projects down the street. In addition to that, there's also a comment regarding site lighting, and we are, we would be proposing LED darkback compliant full cutoff fixtures. The lighting would obviously be for the safety and security of not only the businesses but residents here, and obviously would be, would prove that there's no nuisance to any abutting, abutting parcels. And another request from WMC reflected in Dr. Poland's letter signage. We do, we do have provided some more directional signage on the site, but we've also included business pylon signage along the frontage for the commercial development, which I've highlighted in yellow with those three slashes. And then the majority of the comments that are overlapping between WMC and the planning consultants are, I'd say in regards to parking and, and the reduction of parking, which we've reduced this site plan by fifty-six parking spaces. We feel that, that is a good reduction in terms of reducing impervious area, but also provides enough parking to, to be successful for the businesses and residents that would live here. We've also, as I pointed out, updated trash enclosures and access to those trash enclosures, providing additional sidewalks and crosswalks for pedestrian flow around the development, and also provided dedicated loading areas for residents. And I'm going to point out some of those features here. So again, crosswalks from retail to hotel. We've also shifted the location of this and provided more streamlined access, as this would be the main entrance facility. We have provided a sidewalk network here with a crosswalk from residents to the retail, and reflected that on this side of the drive aisle as well. There has been, I'm going to change colors real quick. There's been a reduction in parking, shown in orange here. That provides wider landscaped areas, but it also provides more flexibility for the restricted access that will be between the commercial developments and the residence. If you guys remember from the last presentation, we are proposing to gate the access between the commercial and residence, and the reduction in parking has allowed some flexibility to include gates. So that would be in this location here, this location here, and this location here. I'm just going to go counterclockwise around now. So there is also a reduction in parking along here and here, and the shrinking of the carport. We've added crosswalks in several locations across the rear. We've also relocated the dumpster, dumpster enclosures away from the actual residence halls and converted these areas here into dedicated loading spaces for the ease of residents moving in and out of these apartments. Moving around, again, we have provided a sidewalk network along several of the landscaped islands between both of the residents and the actual carports. We have provided dedicated loading spaces on, on either building for, for the moving of residents. We have provided sidewalks and staircases to connect this upper area, because as you remember, these buildings are staggered in height. And this would provide circulation and access around the clubhouse and the in-ground pool. We've also provided connections for sidewalks down to the convenience store, which I've just traced with orange. We have eliminated parking in this area. This would provide a much larger landscaped island area and would also double as a great area for snow storage. As I mentioned here, the dumpster enclosure has been relocated to be tucked behind the building here. In addition to that, we have also provided a crosswalk access from this front row of parking to the front of the convenience store, and also a sidewalk network. And also a sidewalk network and crosswalk to the convenience store from these adjacent parking stalls to the south. Those are overall a reduction of 56 parking spaces. We do still have over 450, which complies with your regulations. And as I mentioned before, we still do feel that it was a great suggestion. It does improve flow around the site, but still provides enough parking spaces that are adequate for this development to thrive. I'm happy to go through the consultant's letter line by line, but they're quite, you know, they're quite lengthy. And I'm sure you do want to hear from the architect and the traffic, traffic engineer. So at this point, I'll leave it at that. Obviously, there's a lot of technical things related to WMC's letter that we are, as George mentioned, we are happy to comply with minus a few that we would, I think, would need to discuss a little bit further. And we're happy to do that. But I'll leave it at that for now. I'm happy to answer any questions or if you have any at the end, I'm happy to answer them at a later, later time as well.
Matt, this is Commissioner Mish Miller. Can I just ask you a couple of questions? So you, you went through 64 pages of real detail real quickly. Not that that's a question. So just turning attention for a minute to the WMC. There, there's a lot of comments that they made and I guess improvements that they wanted to see or modifications that they thought were needed, a lot of to the drainage or whatever, which you guys agreed on for the most part and said that you would do that. Now, have you reflected all that stuff back into all the diagrams or in the plans? Or is that still a lot that's supposed to happen? And how do we ensure that what you said you were going to do is going to ultimately be reflected in your plans?
Matt, maybe I could speak to that. This is Peter Alter.
Absolutely.
What we would ordinarily do would be that if the commission sees fit to act on this application at some point, to the extent that the plans have not been fully revised to reflect all of the changes that WMC has requested and that we've agreed to, what a commission would consider doing is imposing a condition that final plans are to reflect the changes to the plans as directed by WMC, the town's consultant. And then before our final plans were filed, the consultant would confirm that the plans now reflect all of their changes. That would be typically the way we would do that.
Okay. So Maureen, I have a question for you too, if I could ask, just from a procedural perspective. There are a couple of areas within the WMC response, within their responses to WMC, where I'm not going to say they disagree with them, but they didn't think it was necessary, that there were other factors or design standards to go by. Do we go back to WMC and see whether they get concurrence that those things are okay?
Sorry, this is Maureen responding. I believe that part of what I was hearing was going to be happening tonight is WMC as well.
Okay.
And giving some, some response to that. But I certainly would encourage that plans be finalized to the point where the consultant, you know, any plan has conditions of approval that for permitting then get tweaked a little bit further. But that prior to them getting to the permit stage and possibly even the approval stage that the consultants re-review to make sure that the conditions discussed and agreed upon by the commission based on their and based on their recommendations have been met appropriately and are reflected on the plan. Because we need, especially with the engineering drawings, we need their level of expertise with regard to that.
So in the WMC plan, it's probably, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys know better than I do. I think there was only like four or five areas where there was sort of a difference of opinion. Is it worthwhile going through those four or five areas? I'm just trying to think of the best way to procedurally go through all of this information.
I have to admit, given the fact that the office was open today, I did not get through all the responses that we got from the, from the applicant that came in this morning. So I don't know the extent of that, but I would think that WMC may be able to provide a little bit of feedback with regard to that.
Yeah, this is Bob Barnetti with WMC. You know, I, I think the engineer did a great job, you know, addressing most of our comments that that a lot of them can be easily resolved, even though some of them were somewhat technical. I think the biggest issues that we're going to have is just reviewing the stormwater management facilities. In particular, you know, I'm definitely going to, we would definitely like to see more detail with the main stormwater management basin with, with the lack of soil data. It's difficult to predict, you know, the soil capacities, the infiltration. If the soils aren't as permeable as, you know, maybe the under, the soils mapping may show. You know, that pond might be susceptible to holding water much longer than anticipated. And that's not always necessarily a bad thing. It's just the engineer just might have to account for a wet storage basin rather than a basin that he's expecting to be dry. You know, maybe within 24 hours of a rain event is kind of like a typical standard we like to see. And then with the, the water quality swell. I believe Matt had mentioned maybe making that a wet, a wet, a wet quality swell. And those typically requires, you know, some additional wetland plantings along the edges. So, you know, we'd probably like to see some further detail on that. You know, some of the hydraulic analysis is, you know, they, they have yet to complete. You know, we'd like to see further details with that. I'm sorry. I have my, my, my son who's supposed to be in bed right now and is being a little needy. So I apologize. For a moment. So again, the overall nature, I think most of the comments can be addressed. But I think there's going to be some further testing and analysis and review on our part to kind of be a little bit more confident that what the engineer is proposing is going to function as, as he anticipates. I think he also mentioned one of the borings in the area of the detention basin being 20 feet to groundwater. I don't, not necessarily sure that that might be the case. Maybe I was looking at a different map. I think there's another boring that shows groundwater a little bit more shallow. And again, it's difficult to determine what depth everything is at when there's no finished or existing elevations provided with the actual borings. So again, all this information would be helpful and reviewing if we can get a little bit more, you know, detailed.
Okay. A couple of specific question, well, one specific question to you. Do you have any concerns about the plan for the snow removal? I mean, that's a pretty dense site, the way I look at it. And if we were to have a record snowfall year, are there any issues where you see them depositing the snow and creating a huge mountain? Is there any issues to drainage or any of that kind of stuff in their plans that might be problematic?
Well, let's face it, if, if they got three feet of snow like we did, you know, maybe eight years ago with that big snowstorm, yes, I think they're going to have a huge problem. But, you know, that, that happens every dense development. But I, I think, I think my general concern is the, you know, the, the six to 12-inch snowfall event. Or let's just say a 12-inch snowfall event, you know. How, how is that snow going to get removed to the point where it's not being pushed up against everybody's cars? And then everyone has to dig their way out and then, you know, has a challenge of navigating that, that snow. And then the actual contractors, the developer uses to remove the snow. You know, they're, they're going to be operating some big, heavy machinery in close proximity to people's, the rear bumpers of everyone's cars, basically.
Well, my concern was more centered around the, if I understand it correctly, that there would be areas designated to redistribute that snow to with payloaders or whatever and dump it, whatever. I'm just thinking of a particular situation. I, for years and years drove by the Berlin Turnpike year after year. And there's a DOT center down there or a state building down there where they put all the snow in one area. And by the time they're done, the end of March, the thing is sky high and doesn't melt until July type, type of. So that's, that's where my concern, and that's in the normal course of a winter. Like if we have a normal winter or maybe slightly above normal, not a catastrophic three-foot snowstorm. I wasn't really indicating that, but just the, you know, the snow is going to pile up if the weather stays cold. And then it's all going to melt probably fairly rapidly in the, you know, March timeframe.
Yeah.
I'm just raising the question.
Yeah.
George, I can speak to that a little bit if you'd like.
I think the developer could probably, you know.
That's fine, whoever.
Yeah, it's a great question. Yeah, and I mean, as, as Bob stated, you know, a three-foot storm, it's a problem for everybody, right? It's something we got to deal with and let it melt. But I'd say the normal course of a winter, like what we've been having, I'd say maybe the past few weeks. The, you know, the intention is obviously to use the landscape islands that are, that are strategically placed around all the buildings. And that's only been increased by the reduction in parking. So, you know, areas, yeah, I'm just going to point out, right? Areas along the, the hotel, along the rear here as well. There's some larger islands by the entrances and spaces around here. And then obviously this is one of the larger, the larger areas I'm circling down here between the convenience store. The goal would be to utilize those places strategically as needed. But I'd also like to point out too, that we still are technically overparked by the regulations. We still think these spaces are needed for part of the business, but as with most businesses and residents, right? There's some, there'll be, you know, some spaces that would typically be used for snow storage in the intermediate period. That would, you know, hold snow and as it melts, it would then trickle down into the stormwater management system. And let the stormwater management system do its thing by cleaning and discharging into the wetland. So, you know, the developer is confident that the snow removal operation could function on this site with, with, with a loader. And obviously in concert with cooperation from the residents. You know, we do have a lot of underground, quote unquote, underground parking for the residents. And we do have carports as well. So there is that ability to have covered parking to allow snow removal operations to take place. So obviously we don't want a site that won't function properly.
Okay. One, another comment relative to an area and then a question. One was, I think both firms kind of commented on the gas station and the parking net was there and the inability to relocate those seven parking spaces to the front to have to eliminate the need for people walking through high-traffic areas. And I think one of the responses back was that, you know, they don't anticipate much of a pedestrian traffic not being gas-oriented, not being gas customers at the same time. My comment happens to be is like, I think it all depends on what the amenities of that gas station slash convenience store slash food store, whatever. I could tell you if it had any of the amenities like a Cumberland Farms, those things are like nightmares with regard to traffic. So I was sort of, depending upon what's actually going in there, I don't think you can gauge whether the seven parking spots where they're putting them are adequate. I think it's going to be, could be, could be problematic. So that's, that's just my comment on that.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that if you don't mind. Yeah, so, yeah, no, it's a great point. And, and just to elaborate on why we have it the way we have it, right? We do have, which I'm highlighting in yellow here, a wetland boundary. We also have a floodway boundary. We also have a building setback. And then we also have a separation distance to the, your regulations call for, I believe it's 1,500 feet between gas stations along Berlin Turnpike. So these three lines or four lines basically boxed, boxed this location in. But hearing obviously that, you know, we want everyone to be safe on site. You know, we do have handicap spaces adjacent to the building here. We do have seven spaces adjacent to the building here with the crosswalk. We do have 15 spaces along the frontage and we have dedicated a crosswalk for safe crossings there. And just for me personally, I know, you know, when I do go to a gas station, I would fill up and park along these kiosks. And then when I'm done filling up, I walk across, you know. So these spaces are, you know, likely being to use as you're going to fill up, you're going to run in to get your coffee, you're going to run in to get a candy bar, whatever it may be. And the additional amenity that is shown for this convenience store is, you know, a coffee, a coffee place with a drive-through. So not even any need to get out of your car. And we all know in these COVID times that this drive-through would be used extensively as opposed to parking and walking into the building. So we feel like that given the restrictions and the challenges of the site, the topography, the setbacks and the wetlands, that, you know, we, we have provided adequate spaces in close proximity to the front door and means for the kind of further away spaces to safely traverse the parking lot to get into the facility as needed.
Okay. My last question, because it was just relative to a comment from Gorman in York. And it was indicated in the response that you were bringing it up in the presentation. There was a concern on their part on the bedroom, the one bedrooms with dens, how you configure them, because there was a concern about turning the den into a, you know, an unlawful second bedroom, causing issues.
Absolutely. I will leave that to the architect. And if you, that might be a good transition to the rest of the presentation, if you want to put a pin in that for the moment.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Peter, do you want me to move forward with some of the slides?
Thank you, George, for the questions and good discussion. I guess we do want to continue on with the presentation here.
Yeah, you can, do you have the powerpoint to move forward?
Yep, let me know when you see it. I think I'm 10 seconds ahead of you.
Do you want Meg, do you want Meg to do it?
Here we go.
There we go.
Okay, yep, no, I think I'm just a little farther ahead of you. Mark, let me know where you want to start.
Yeah, keep going. Yeah. Yeah, so I got backup one. Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll start there.
Mark, introduce yourself.
Yeah. Yeah, for the record, my name is Mark Joyce, Associate Principal at, at the architectural firm Phase Zero Design. We did receive the, the letters along with the rest of the team, very well-received letters. I'm not going to go into too much depth. There were some high-level comments that did impact in a positive light the, the overall design of the, of the complex. I just start on this, this slide, just to kind of show you a progression of the exterior facade design, where it, where it started at and where it is now. Because the original rendering that we proposed or that we prepared at last presentation. Next slide, you'll see sort of an evolution in the design with respect to the exterior materials. These are the residential block buildings, the five residential buildings. Just a brief, sort of a summary of the construction that's, that's being proposed. It's four stories of wood frame construction sitting on what is termed a podium-style construction of, consisting of, excuse me, structural steel. There's a basement level internal, mainly internal parking, but you'll see that we've incorporated some other spaces, some other amenities into that basement level. Facade of the building is, for the most part, a maintenance-free facade. We come out of the ground essentially with a brick veneer, which is a belden Berwick. We come out of the ground essentially with a brick veneer, which is a Belden Berwick blend, standard sized brick. It has mainly red tones with, you know, a black tonality to it for some texture and color mix. We transitioned to, which is essentially a hardy, a hardy product line of clapboard siding, panel siding and shingles. It's in this sort of a gray tone. The clapboard siding is called gray slate. The shingles are called light mist and the panels are called cobble cobblestone. We'll absolutely provide, you know, actual samples of all the materials as we as we move forward. Then we cap the building with asphalt shingles, very sort of residential in this field and architectural shingle. Looking at certainty for those in there called a driftwood, that's the color palette. Windows will will be a vinyl double hung window with one inch insulated glazing. Give us a very good U value. Their product by Harvey Industries, which is is the product has really come a long way. It actually is probably a better window than than Anderson, if there's no Anderson reps out there. And it's going to be in a black frame, kind of give it a little bit of a contemporary feel. Go to, if you can go to the next slide, I'll try to get into some of the comments that were specific, that specifically came out. Again, this is another rendering of the rear of the building, typical rear of the building. You'll see the difference in the in the color palettes now. This image, this image does show what Matt had touched on was sort of these, I guess I'll call them originally service courts in some sense. We originally had the dumpster dumpsters there. Now we've pulled the dumpsters out of these areas and have reserved that space for sort of moving day space where some, where tenants can come down, park their moving van and now maneuver in and out of the building with their with their moving day activities. Next slide, please. Again, you'll see a progression of the exterior facade color palette and materials. I won't, I won't speak over this too too much, but I think you'll just see, you know, sort of an overall warming of the building. That was the, that was deliberate attempt. Keep going. Next slide. We've generated this building section in in response to one of the comments with respect to the height of the building. In addition, sort of screening of the mechanical units. You can see that on the left side of this building, this is sort of a typical building section. On the left side of the page is what I've been calling the uphill side of the of the property, where the four stories are sort of exposed. The right hand portion of the building section is the five story exposure that that has the parking level exposed. The overall height to the main parapet of the building is 60 foot six from the lowest sort of the downhill side. We do have, like I, like I mentioned, we have, what are we looking at? It's about a four and a half foot tall parapet that's going to screen all rooftop mechanical equipment, condensing units and 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 any any HVAC equipment that that is there. Next slide, please. Yeah, just keep going. Like I said, this is just as a progression of the design elements on the buildings. We're pretty excited where the where the project, you know, sort of where the comments have come and and taken us and even internally, sort of where the project stands currently. We generated, we updated a few of the rendered views of the of the of the project in an overall and an aerial. We are now showing the C store and gas pumps. We're now, and we're also showing the retail spaces, excuse me, the retail building on property. The the retail building will probably develop over time as we solidify the tenancy. But it's 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 pretty close to where it where it will end up. We're still showing the hotel ghosted in a white sort of massing until an actual hotel provider, or excuse me, a hotel flag comes in to pick. Next slide. I think the next couple of slides are, yeah, good. So we did have this view before of the signal intersection. We just sort of adjusted the orientation. Again, it picks up the C store, the retail center hotel, and then the residential buildings behind. Next slide, please. Another view mainly of the the entrance and exit out of the retail, excuse me, the C store. Next slide. This is the original floor plan, sort of again, previous prior to receiving some of the the review comments. In space, 21 parking spaces, vertical circulation, the forms of stairs and elevator, resident storage. Next slide. Some of the comments that we had received was mainly about pedestrian access to and from this level from outside the perimeter of the building. We did reorient stair number two, which is sort of in the middle of the page, sort of on the, I guess I'll call it the north side of the floor plan down towards the left of the building. Thank you, Matt. We've reoriented that stair. We've also, we're also providing sort of a walk pass through now, a clear, a clear opening through the building wall into that sort of crosshatch area, the paint stripe area. So pedestrians who parked out on the property can walk straight in, straight into this floor level. Now, now the resident has the option of, you know, ducking into these, this stairwell and going upstairs or walking across over to the elevator. Bit of on the lower left portion of floor plan. Again, part of the comment having to do with moving day access to and from the building. We've reoriented that corner a little bit. Again, providing a walk in access directly into the building from sort of where you would park your U-Haul. Providing a paint stripe area so nobody parks there or or anything there. And now you can bring your, bring your furniture and so on into the building. Little amenity that we was, we were able to add into the building when we started to actually reconfigure the lobbies a little bit. To try to open up the lobby space somewhat was a dogwash within each building. Become a really popular amenity in multifamily dwellings. So it's that gray, that gray, exactly. It's that gray sort of room there. Now, as market, as market may dictate from building to building, it may become a different, a different small amenity. But we've sort of, you know, allocated that space as a smaller amenity. We will still have the communities, the community room or the community building with the pool and some larger scale amenities. Next slide, please. We have adjusted the floor plan or the dwelling unit layouts to comply with EHF A. Really, the original floor plans, other unit layouts were not really that far off. We hit the room sizes, we hit the square footages. But we did reconfigure some of the units to, you know, come close, to come closer or even exceed the exceed the standards. We did have, this is, this is the original floor plan. I don't really want to dive into it too too much, but the two sort of blue units on the right hand side are the one bedroom plus den units that did come up in discussion and has been raised tonight. If you go to the next slide, Matt, you you'll you'll see a progression of unit layout and in particular, the two now purple units. We've kind of increased that doorway into that den area. So it will not be construed as a as a two bedroom unit. And and we're seeing in market also, particularly in response to COVID that these den, these den spaces, these home office areas, there's, you know, workspaces are extremely important. It's in the in the market and we see that as a as a benefit to this development. Next, next slide, please. Which I think, I know I went quickly, but like I said, we've, we've addressed all of the issues raised in the in the peer review or comments. We've adjusted the 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 design. We're very, very happy where it sits sits now. And if there's any questions, of course, we'll answer those, but Peter, I think I'll throw it back to you.
This is Commissioner Millard. Mark, can we just go back for a minute to look at the that aerial view you showed?
Yes.
I I just had a question about the traffic flow as to where the stoplight's going to be and if you're going northbound. If you can go, you had one where you had, yeah, right here. So so if I want to go to the gas station and I'm going northbound, I'm going to come in this way and I'm going to go through the the retail space and exit back through it if I want to come back out and continue northbound.
Scott, can you, you're the traffic engineer. I am an architect. I'm not even going to try. Would you be able to jump in and hit this specifically?
I can. Can everyone hear me?
Thank you.
Yes.
Good. Yeah, this is Scott Esken. I'm the traffic consultant on the project. The proposed median break and the signalized intersection is located north of the entrances to the convenience store. So if one was traveling northbound and wanted to have access to the convenience store, they have two options. You could make a U-turn to the Berlin Turnpike and head south and then make a right hand turn into the convenience store driveway. Or one could make a left hand turn to the development and and use the connecting drive behind the retail store to access it.
Yeah, I'm thinking about getting out.
Getting out, you have the option to go south. If you decide to go northbound, you can come back to the retail, to the traffic center and access the light. The one thing about convenience stores is they're called convenience stores for a reason. People generally use them if they're convenient to use. And that generally means a right hand turn in and a right hand turn out. So unless this is the closest place to you and it's 10 o'clock at night and your spouse said you you got to go down and pick up a thing of milk or a or something I need for dinner and this is the closest place and you want to make a left hand turn in, you'll probably do it. If you're going to or from one place to another, you're going to pass seven or eight convenience stores slash gas stations on the Berlin Turnpike. And unless you just happen to have a credit card for this particular place or you happen to know the cashier. One of them, it's probably not going to be much of a difference to you. So right turn in and right turn out is typically the the movement people use for these types of uses. Option for people making lefts, they have several options to access the site if they so desire.
Okay, thanks.
And I guess Mark is done, so I'll just jump into traffic and I'll be very brief here. As the review comment regarding traffic were relatively minor. Did prepare a traffic impact report. I've submitted an application. We reviewed background traffic volumes. We had from the state, we had turning movement counts at the signalized intersections, both north and south of the development. We projected traffic volumes for the proposed development based on IT numbers. Distributed distributed them to the local roadway network, conducted capacity analysis at the signalized intersections as as well as the proposed site driveway. And we prepared a report and submitted it. We initially started the project, we reached out to the folks at the Connecticut Department of Transportation in OSTA and asked them about the possibility of having a median break at this particular location. They did not let us know right off the bat. And they told us that if we could make the case that they'd be happy to review it. So they did encourage us to make an application to them with a median break in a traffic signal. Subsequent to that, we did go to the police commission. We presented them a traffic impact report with three different options. One was the signalized intersection you see here on the plan. Another was a hybrid where we would propose a median break and northbound left turns into the site, but but not allow left hand, left hand turns out of the site. And we also reviewed with them right turn in and right turn out movements at at all three of the site driveways. The police commission encouraged us to present this particular option, both through your commission and to the Office of the State Traffic Administration. And and that's the plan that's before you this evening. Now, we are projecting exceptional levels of service at all three of our site driveways. Believe that providing the median break and the traffic signal at this location would reduce potential impacts at the other two signalized intersections for the mere fact that if we allow left hand turns to occur at this location, we negate the need to have U-turn movements at either of the two other locations or at least severely reduce the need for U-turn movements at those two locations. So we can effectively reduce the volume of traffic that we put for those two locations. We believe we have a sufficient intersection site distance at this location. We have appropriate separation distances between the two existing signals and this proposed signal. And we believe that we will have a favorable review with the with the OSTA folks. We did make a step one application to OSTA for approval of the traffic volumes. The OSTA process is now a three step process where first you must get the traffic volumes approved. The second step would occur where we would submit the full application, site plan and the like. And we would not receive significant comments from OSTA until after the step two application. It's OSTA's policy that they they do not make approvals until after planning and zoning commissions have acted. So it would be appropriate for us to go through this process for a little while, get comments back from your commission before we make our formal application to OSTA for the site plans as well. So that's where we're at currently. That's our traffic report in a nutshell. If the commission has any specific questions related to traffic, I'll be happy to entertain them. And unless you, unless you want to do it now, I can turn the microphone back over to Peter Alter, who has a few more legal points you'd like to make.
Thank you, Scott. I I did want to speak to the housing affordability plan briefly. Dr. Poland had raised some comments and issues in our discussion and also in his report back to the commission. And we have had the opportunity to address those and review those with Mr. Diaddio. And I, what I can report to you is that we have now provided a schedule of designated units that will be affordable units rather than the plan that we started with, which was that the affordable units would not be designated, but would rather move around with the population of the apartments. We have now established affordable units that are consistent with the mix of units, consistent with being throughout all five buildings and meeting the same proportions in each of the buildings on different floor levels so that there is a true comparability between the affordable units and the market rate units as expected. Secondly, we did receive a letter which we submitted today from your housing authority indicating that the housing authority is willing to accept the responsibility of administration and overseeing compliance with the affordability plan. So that, and it was suggested by Dr. Poland that we have a third party oversee that process. And your housing authority has, if I may say enthusiastically, agreed to fulfill that function. And their letter is also really a letter of support. Uh, and their letter is also really a letter of support. Uh, Dr. Poland raised the issue whether or not we could actually state that we would be giving special consideration to Town of Berlin employees. Uh, he raised that issue. I looked at it and as a result of our, our, our further, uh, review of that, we've eliminated that language uh, from our, our affordability plan to avoid any possibility that, uh, there was an issue in eligibility. We also, uh, added a provision that takes into account the cost of utilities as part of the determination of the, uh, maximum amounts, uh, of rent uh, that parties can pay and qualify, uh, under the formula that's described in the affordability plan. Again, this was uh, at the suggestion of Dr. Poland. Uh, we thought it was, uh, completely appropriate and so we've added it as an additional factor in determining uh, potential residents' ability to pay and qualify for, uh, occupying an affordable unit. So we think we have, uh, got our affordability plan in, um, pretty good order. Uh, based on all the comments that we received and based on the acceptance of the administration of it by the, the housing authority. Uh, so we're pretty comfortable with that. And since that's an important aspect of this overlay zone process, uh, we wanted to bring you up to date on our, uh, efforts in that regard. Uh, we think that, um, the, the changes that Mark Joyce made to the plan and uh, the adjustment of, of the units, uh, the way you saw tonight really speaks to, uh, a very high level opportunity for not only affordable but market rate housing, uh, for the town of Berlin. With that, um, i- it's important to us a- as a development team to hear from commissioners and your consultants with respect to any issues that you think need further, uh, consideration, any matters that you're concerned about. Any aspects of this that, uh, seem to you to, uh, need our attention in some regard. Um, we tried very hard to respond to both WMC and Dr. Poland's comments. Um, a- and, uh, certainly we can speak to the technical stormwater management matters. Matt Bruton and his company can can speak with WMC and reach an accommodation on those. I'm absolutely certain. With that, uh, we welcome, uh, the comments from the consultants and then uh, comments and questions from commissioners that would give us some insight into any areas that, um, we should give further consideration to. There, oh, there is one other issue that has plagued us from the beginning of this application. And that, a- and Dr. Poland discusses it in his memo as well. Uh, we don't know what the regulation specifically means when it speaks about the 10-acre parcel requirement. When we started a- and Mr. Diaddio and I were both involved originally when uh, your commission undertook this, uh, zoning ordinance. We thought that the idea was that you would start with a 10-acre parcel as a, as the minimum sized parcel that could accept this, this zone. The way that the regulation reads a- and as Dr. Poland points out, i- it seems to conflict with itself. We don't know whether we have to keep 10-acre parcels intact or not. Uh, we can, if, if the commission says, yeah, that's exactly what we meant. We never want any part of a development, a mixed-use development like this to be less than 10 acres by itself. Then we have enough acres. We have over 35 acres. We can, we can meet that requirement. We don't think that's the best way to do it. We think that uh, the underlying zone provision requiring two acres makes more sense. But, uh, this is a matter that the commission really has to give us uh, a, a decision on because your staff has asked the question. Mr. Poland, Dr. Poland has responded. Uh, we've gone on the worst-case scenario, which is that we need 10 acres for any separate parcel. Um, but it makes development more difficult uh, for Mr. Diaddio. It would be easier if, uh, parcels could be, uh, taken a- by way of the underlying zone. So that's a issue that I want to put on the table. You may certainly want to ask your consultants about it. Um, but, uh, ultimately, at least my understanding of the law is that it's up to the commission to give guidance as to what its regulation is intended to accomplish. And with that, uh, I'll turn it back to the chair to pursue their consultants or, uh, seek comments from the commission or the public. This is a public hearing as well.
All right. Thank you all for your presentation. Um, and yeah, so it is part of the public hearing, so we will be going to the public first. But before I do, I would like to swing back to my commissioners to see if they have any questions that perhaps were raised during the presentation that you would like to, uh, present or forward to the applicant at this time.
The Commissioner Zigma.
Yes, Tim.
Yes, uh, I was wondering if the, with the proposed hotels and the commercial development there. I guess the residential, they're saying it's going to be gated. Uh, is there going to be a cross parking easement agreement between two, uh, facilities there, the hotel and, and the, and the, uh, re- retail, uh? Cause that hotel is full. I've got questions about parking, uh, around that hotel. If there's a cross agreement that they could use some of the, that commercial building parking lot, uh, when they're overloaded or have a function in there. Uh, you know, so I'm just wondering if there's going to be that type of situation.
A- and the response is yes, there will. Um, we i- in our analysis believe that, uh, the times when the hotel will be most busy are times when the retail, uh, component will likely not be as busy, certainly in the evening. Uh, or when most guests return to a hotel. So we, yes, there will be cross easements and parking arrangements between those two properties. Um, right now they sit on one piece of property so that, uh, that won't be an issue. But if we were determined that parcels could be up to two acres, then they might be on separate parcels. And we would have cross parking arrangements.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Tim?
Yeah, I was going to, with the, uh, the water, uh, I know the water comes through there with the Matabasa River and it's always been, uh, uh, a problem with the water flow, uh, coming over to, over to the highway, uh, Berlin Turnpike even. Uh, and I just want to know how that's going to be addressed, uh, with that Matabasa, that's a river, uh, area, the flood plain, whatever.
Uh, we i- i- Matt, you can speak to the technical side, but let me just give you a little background. We spent uh, over a year with your flood authority, which is also your, uh, wetlands agency. We had, uh, one of the people we considered to be a leading expert in the country come in to do an analysis and provide us with guidance. And that, Mr. Leonard Jackson worked with WMC and its consultants to the satisfaction of your flood, uh, commission. Uh, and they granted us, uh, not only a wetlands permit, but a flood permit uh, with the design that, uh, BL Companies and Mr. Jackson created. Matt, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Uh, no, I mean, that's, that's pretty, a pretty good high-level, uh, overview, Peter. But yeah, it was analyzed to make sure that uh, there's no, uh, additional downhill flooding. Um, so this development will not make any situation, uh, worse.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, any other commissioners at this point?
Sure. Um, Commissioner Robert, I was just looking at the drawings here for the layouts of the apartment rooms. And I noticed that the den has its own private bathroom and private closet. And there's already a bathroom in the, uh, unit. So I mean, to me, it really really looks like a two-bedroom unit and not a one-bedroom. I mean, if you look at the comparison to the other side where it is a two-bedroom, the only thing we did was take down the dividing wall. Um, so it really doesn't fit the definition of a one-bedroom personally to me.
No, point, point well, this is Mark Joyce. Point well taken. Um, a- a- again, it's not the intent. We don't see that this markets for, for that many two-bedrooms in this development. Um, a simple change to the design is we can reorient that bathroom such that the door into the bathroom is sort of more, uh, more to the south, I guess I'll call it. Um, a- and again, that's, that's not, we could additionally, we can think of the closet such that it's it's dedicated to the one-bedroom area.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners, before I go to the public on this? All right. Um, so we are in the public hearing and, um, I know that we have some folks who are listening online. So this will be your chance to address the commission regarding the application. Uh, so is there anyone from the public who wishes to choose or has any questions or comments or concerns?
Mr. George.
Yes, could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Joseph Bajorski, 80 Burnout Lane in Kensington, Connecticut. I, uh, am appearing tonight as chairman of the Housing Authority on behalf of the Housing Authority to, uh, voice our support for this project. We feel that this project, um, adds a significant number of affordable units to the town, which is one of the goals of the Housing Authority. Forty units of affordable housing equals one of our current existing projects. Um, and these forty units are coming to the town without any state money being invested into it, or town money for that matter. Uh, this is a perfect use of the public-private partnership. Um, we feel the affordability plan that the developer has presented is well-thought-out. And, um, not only meets his goals, but also meets the goals of, uh, the Berlin Housing Authority and the Department of Housing at the state level to, um, diversify the housing stock in the town of Berlin. Uh, this will also go a long way towards getting us to our floor for affordable housing as a percentage of our total housing stock, which will allow some, you know, flexibility from planning and zoning and head off the Bristol Creek situation. Um, so we are strongly in support of this project. We think the, uh, market rate units are going to end a lot, or lend a lot of, uh, road traffic to the Berlin Turnpike, which will create additional economic development opportunities. And I think this is a critical mass-type project that will eventually impact economic, uh, opportunities up and down the turnpike. So we do support it.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bajorski, for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to address the commission at this time? Okay, hearing none. Let's circle back to the commission. Give you a chance to look at the project again. And, um, I mean, obviously we have a lot of information in front of us. And, um, with the information that came out today, I know that I would, um, like to have a chance to um, read, to follow over and document it today and also to revisit. Um, I did have a couple of questions really quick. Um, and, um, I wanted to ask the applicants, um, I, I believe we're gonna, I'm just going to talk about the architecturals for a minute because a couple of things popped out at me as I was watching, uh, the slideshow. Um, and that is, um, I would like, I know that you've tried to take some, um, some links to improve the building, um, taking it, you know, the, the residential and taking our feedback into concern. Um, I would like to see, just looking at the architecturals for the residential, I would like to see if we can, um, perhaps to do some, something in way of framing out the windows. As I look at it, it almost looks as if the, the art, you know, as the building is there. But I'd like to pop out the windows a little bit. And also you have the, um, the balconies there. And I think perhaps we should look at perhaps dressing that up as well to sort of, um, make them a little bit more in a unique in character and the building a little bit more pleasant to the eye. One of the questions I've had about the residential buildings is that the ones that are closest to the hotel, it seems to me that your view will be the hotel. Um, it seems that there's an end to the building there and I think that there's balconies there. So I can't imagine sitting outside with a glass of wine and looking at a hotel building. Um, so I'm not sure how you want to break that up or, or to try to make that more of a pleasant area. Um, you may want to look at Birmingham for the front of the, uh, facility itself. Um, right now, the way the presentation is, is the plan is very flat with the buildings. And it almost looks like, presents like mushrooms. And I'm not trying to be insulting. I'm just, just trying to get right to the point. Perhaps if you could do something with Birmingham in the front of the building, you would then make the buildings not look so tall. And you could also do nice landscaping. You could still do your signage. And I think it would help warm up the whole project and, and not be so stark, um, as it sits there. Um, I encourage you to do more with landscaping and more with the green space. I know you have some challenges there with the parking. The work project is set up, it's very, very poor. It's very difficult, like, the way it's laid out. And I think that we need to try to, to look at that a little bit and try to work with that. Um, I do believe that Mr. Millard, our Commissioner Millard has addressed a lot of concerns that I had that were highlighted. So thank you for doing that for me, George. I really appreciate it. Um, and he raises some really valid questions and concerns. And, um, and I'm encouraged to go back and review all of this information again. As, um, I do want to go back to our consultants as well and give them a chance to see if they want to chime in or add anything um, to the public hearing at this time.
Uh, this is Bob. Our next one is WMC. I, I, I think I have down a couple of questions I had. Uh, Matt, you can, you can help me out with, uh, this has to do with pedestrian access. There, there's, how much pedestrian connection are you trying to achieve with people in the northern buildings? To get down to the, um, the, the pool area, the clubhouse or the convenience store or gas station? There's, there's no connected link from the northernmost sidewalks and carport down to the central level of the, the development or even further south. It's a, it looks like you're maybe missing one, one sidewalk connection, uh, on those northern buildings.
Uh, yeah, so, um, the, the connections that we can, uh, we can look at adding, I guess, to your pointers, obviously, right? We do have the, the sidewalk that gets here. We have the sidewalk and staircase that get to this level. Uh, we can, I guess, continue crossings um, between this main boulevard, um, to, to access, uh, these northern buildings. So that's something that can be added um, along, uh, along the, uh, the main boulevard here. That, that's what you're speaking to.
Uh, no, I actually go, go all the way up north. So if, so if I'm somebody walking out of the building parked in that central building and I don't want to drive down to the convenience store, it's a nice day out, I want to walk, but how do I get there? Without walking in the road.
You'd be, yeah, you'd be, if you were, if you were, uh, anywhere here, right, in any of these, uh, these areas, uh, our, our thought process is that you would, you'd have to enter the building, right? And you would leave out the ground floor level and, and, and And you would leave out the ground floor level and, and, and cross over to the staircase. Because of the grade difference in the loading areas that we do have between the buildings, we do not have a similar staircase area like we do between the clubhouse areas on the southern row of residential buildings.
Is possible to put a sidewalk along the easternmost residential building where the hotel is?
Are you talking about over here?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Yeah, we can, we can look, we can look to add something of that nature to, to allow, I guess pedestrians to, to circumvent and not use the internal building as a, as a route to get down to the southern side of the site.
Okay, I, I could just see that being a, you know, a, I think it would be helpful if you can look into it, if you can make that happen. The next is, if you zoom it, zoom into the gas station where you had the fifteen spaces along the, fifteen? So you provided the-
I'm sorry, I, I missed your, your, we missed your question here, Mr. Bajorski?
Well, which, which, which question did you miss?
The one you just did.
Oh, I, I didn't, I didn't get to it yet, I was, I was just waiting for him to zoom, I was waiting for the, the map to zoom in, so.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, so you, you have the crosswalk to the fifteen spaces across the, the pump, the gas pumps. I don't, I don't mean to be the cynic, but I don't see an individual parking along that frontage, especially toward the south, and then walking all the way up to that crosswalk and then over. I, I see everyone just crossing underneath the pump stations and, and across that, that lane. Again, I have nothing for you to actually do at this time, I'm just, I, I, I see, I perceive people's habits of just going the path of least resistance. Just something to consider with, with whatever plan you, you might come up with next, or maybe a response.
Understood, yeah, I mean, I think we can definitely, to your point, add maybe another one on the southern side. This would be a long walk from the, from the southern fifteen space here. But in reality, we do know that anyone may be parked in the middle here or parked at the actual pumping facility is just going to walk straight to the building. It's kind of like that college campus problem where you walk where you walk, right?
Let's see, and then, and not to harp on yet about the, the snow removal, but I just, it was just to bring up the, the point where you mentioned, you know, you have the, the landscape islands around the site that you might use. The, the concern there is you're, you're going to restrict a lot of sightlines if you're condensing all that snow into these small, narrow islands. Again, nothing for you to physically do at this moment, just things to consider, again, with your next iteration. And then, maybe, so your, your development is somewhat linear. So yes, you, you reduce the parking, I think is, is helpful, but with the site plan and parkings being linear, I think it's going to present challenges as to what parking you choose to allocate for snow removal. So maybe it might be beneficial on the next plan to just highlight the area, the designated areas, maybe where the development says, you know, nope, you have a parking ban on, you know, these fifty parking spaces, these forty parking spaces, you know, with a pending snow event coming. I, I think that would be helpful just for the commission, the town, you know, everybody to, to realize where exactly you do anticipate piling snow.
Understood.
And the, the other issue again with the stormwater management, you know, I think Peter Alter mentioned, yes, I, I have no problem coordinating with you after this, you know, the, the public hearing closes, coordinating with your office to resolve, you know, any concerns we might have. But just to bring up, you, you responded about the, the base, the stormwater management basin, you referred to Boring Number Twenty Twenty-Six. I think that's a bit farther north. And I think what you really want to look at is Boring One-O-One. Of which, from Welty's report, it looks like you do have some, about thirteen feet to groundwater there. But you, not the twenty, but just something to keep in mind when you do do some more test pits there. Your, your groundwater is probably not as deep as you thought.
Absolutely, yeah, I can step a little bit further.
So, though, I think those are the bullet points that I, that I had at this time. You know, everything else, I'll, I can, I'll dive into. When we start, I start reviewing the rest of the responses and, and you're, look forward to your updated plans. Oh, I'm sorry. Last thing was the, the comment that I had about with, with consulting with DOT. It wasn't necessarily in regards to, you know, traffic with OSTA. It, it was more their Hydraulics and Drainage Department. You know, I'm, I'm sure you, you've dealt with them in the past, you know, and anytime you impact the state drainage system with your development, you know, it's almost, you know, you have to demonstrate to the state that their own system is adequate. That's just what happens, you, you almost own it at that point. So that's where though, that comment came from, that I was, I was curious to see if they had passed concerns in that area, if that was problematic to them, just because, you know, you hadn't gotten to the point where you were able to develop a hydraulic, you know, analysis of the actual pipe system, and there were actually no inspection of the pipes themselves. So we don't know how functional the system is. So again, that, that's where my concern was with, with Hydraulics and Drainers Department.
Absolutely, understood, yeah, but obviously, as, as Scott mentioned, step one is being submitted and that more detailed analysis with the, with the state and with OSTA kind of happened. And that step two process, which we will be providing, you know, the drainage analysis is part of that submission for them to review. Yeah, but note well taken.
Okay, I, I think that's it for me.
Thank you, going back to the commissioners, are there any other questions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Bigbaum again.
Yes, Tim.
Yes, well, addressing the snow problem. When they plow down towards the west, there's a curved line there where it designates as the, the road, basically. I don't know why you could put some snow shelves on the, that side end of the, the walk, the driveways, that end of the three driveways with a snow shelf that they could plow up onto towards the rear of the west of that property.
Tim, are you speaking about this area here?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if you put a six-foot, seven-foot snow shelf there, that the, they, even, you know, even with the, the machines, the payload or whatever, they can dump it over in there to get it out of the property, you know?
Understood, yep, we can look at that.
Any other questions from the commission?
John, this is Commissioner Miller. I, I guess while we're on this diagram here, I, I do have a question that I didn't really see any detail on any of the information. And I know they talked about having these walking trails and stuff for the, the residents. So two questions there, is there specificity as to what you're actually going to do there? I know you got some lines scribbled in there or whatever, but I, is that what you're proposing? And that's the design that you're going to build to? And I guess with all the questions about pedestrian traffic or whatever, how's everybody getting there?
George, great, great question, so there's two access points to this recreation area. I'm just going to change colors here real quick. There is obviously the sidewalk network with crosswalks, they have a tread. There's also around here with these parking spaces, a sidewalk and footpath on this side as well. So there's two areas. The, the actual design per se of this, you know, hasn't been maybe flushed out completely, but they would be type of a, you know, a, a stone dust trail that could be used for residents to walk their dogs or the public to take a walk. You know, we think it's obviously important to have outdoor recreation spaces. And given that this is kind of a pristine or, you know, natural state with the wetlands adjacent and the upland review area, to be, you know, adequate space for the residents and the public to use, especially during these COVID times when you can't really get out too much.
Follow-up question, do you know if there were any thoughts in terms of the land that you were going to donate to the, what is it, the Berlin Land Trust? Is, is that all pretty much wetlands, or were they looking to do anything in there that you're aware of that would augment what you're, what you're proposing?
We, we have a map, hold on. So the, the area circled in blue is what we're proposing as part of the onsite recreation area. The remaining nineteen years, you know, are circled in this kind of a light green area, about nineteen, which is adjacent, obviously, town of Berlin area and also New Britain. So it's contiguous, and obviously the thought process being, it makes sense to increase conservation land when it butts other adjacent conservation lands. It is a variety of mature forests and wetland areas with, with some upland review area. So it's kind of prime for conservation, if that's kind of what your, does that answer your question?
Well, my question was, was there any thought on their part that they, they would put a trail system in there too? Or is it really wetlands and just for conservation purposes?
Yeah, I, I have not had personal conversations, I don't know if Mr. Diaddio or the rest of the development team speak to that, but I think it's possible.
I can try, I'm not sure if you can hear me. And I'm not sure if you can hear me or not, because I'm called in, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you're getting great. So I, I've spoken with the land trust, and they are very interested in the land, but they're not interested in doing improvements to the land, they have a very small budget, right? However, you know, that is, is adjacent to our recreation area. So folks that want to enjoy their conservation land, more wilderness-type folks, hunters or whatever, can certainly access our recreation area by the river. And there's a large, it's not all wetlands, the large area thirty, forty percent or more is, is uplands. And so it's a great spot where there here live and pheasant and turkey. It's a, and the pond over there, I don't know if Matt can point it out, has fish in it. So it's, and, and, and the other border, the border that separates our land from the city of New Britain, that's also attributable to the, to the Matabasset. So there's a lot of recreation, uh, land area there that can certainly be accessed to the wilderness-type person that likes the woods. Hunters and, you know, people that like flowers and take photos of pheasants and stuff like that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, any other comments or?
Yes, real quick, going off of Mr. Commissioner Miller's comments, I was looking at it, and in fact, it goes, walking trails are going to be open to the public. I see that the only really parking for the public would be at the gas station. And knowing how popular our walking trails are in Berlin, not only Berlin residents, but people from out of town, do you think that there could be an issue with a public who wants to just go hiking there overburdening the parking at the gas station and causing traffic issues? Or would there be a spot, I don't know, in between the gas station and the residential for maybe a separate parking just for the public to use the trails?
If I, if I could speak to that for a moment? So the, the area for our residents that comes down to the walking trail will be gated so that the public won't be able to get into the resident area for, you know, all folks aren't friendly, you know? So that, that, that community is gated. And the areas that we've left over with the C store, we are overparked there. And that's where the footbridge is. So that would be the area that we're allowing access by the public. We have an abundance of parking spaces there, and we don't believe there'll be a conflict. I don't think you'll have twenty or thirty people out there, I think you'll have two or three at a time. Oh, by the way, I mean, we've had that linked for all these years and have given out hunting permits. And there's never many people that go back there, a few with permission, but there, there's not an abundance of folks that go there.
Okay, all righty, yes, Maureen?
I'd like to just add into that, that as staff looked at this, we also realized that, and maybe you can go back to the map that shows the, the overall area and the adjacent parcels, where it's town of Berlin land to the south, as well as we're anticipating another project that came through wetlands already that will be adjacent to the building that's just below this site, as well as other residential units that are to the north, just north of the Matabasset trunk line that runs next to this parcel. And I was requested to point out to the Planning and Zoning Commission that the, so the workforce housing and the, and the other housing that's come off Denning Road, will, whether there is the opportunity, given where the, the open space and conservation land is, for linkages. And just to point that out to you, that there's an opportunity with where they put their open space, as well as whether or not there's opportunity to create their trails so that it fosters more use and pedestrian traffic for hiking and outdoor uses.
Lots to think about, okay, all righty.
John, ten sigma.
Yes, Tim.
Yes, with the trails that they put in there, the stone dust trail, I know on a sage pond project, years ago, we, on the stone dust trail, we put in exercise stations so far apart. Just said what you should do there, you know, spots or whatever you're doing. Different stations of, of, of direction. You want a high-class development, and you're going to put walking trails in there that you probably should put some exercise stations in there.
Yeah, that's a possibility.
And maybe, maybe with the idea, because of the town of Berlin property here, maybe, maybe it should not go to the land trust, it should go to the town of Berlin, connecting with, you see the town, town of Berlin property to the west again. There's a, there's a pretty good connection there that could happen with town of Berlin property, and town of Berlin wants to put some trails in there or whatever. It'll be a good-sized property, you're fucking, almost eighty acres there.
Commissioner Zerboza?
Yes.
I just want to add to what Commissioner Sigma, Rogan, and Miller did point it out. And I want to note that I do think that the parking for the hiking area is satisfied, you know, that exists. But I also want to add that even primitive rudimentary walking or hiking trails in a property like that are, are a good asset even for your apartments. There's similar setups in Manchester, Connecticut with market rate and higher-end apartments. And many of the residents of those apartments would utilize hiking trails on very similar properties this. So I do think from a planning perspective, it's something that should really be investigated and looked into in the future to help establish.
Terrific, thank you. And anyone else or?
Madam Chair, Tom Follin from Gilman York.
Yes.
Just a few comments, I want to mirror some of Robert's comments. Just a few comments. I want to mirror some of Robert's comments, some of the other comments made, but just one, the concern over bedrooms with dens with the full bath in the closet did actually catch my attention on the review of the revised plans. Something there to kind of mitigate that, I think, would be worthwhile. I'd leave it to the applicants to figure out how to get that to look less like a bedroom. So that's one. Number two is just going back to kind of the parking, the crosswalks and the convenience store. I agree with Robert's comments there. When I met with the applicants, when we had that meeting, we discussed the challenges of, you know, that site and that location based on, you know, the setbacks, the canopy location and so forth. I guess what I don't think you'll ever fully resolve the pedestrian challenge there. But one of my biggest concerns would be illegal parking in front of the convenience store. So I think signage and striping as a no parking area is probably important. One of the commissioners did ask on the question regarding traffic flow and what direction could they go north out of the convenience store? I think one option was missed in that discussion, and that is you could go back through the access drive and exit the light that's being installed. So I felt that there was an alternative to just turning south out of the convenience store. The two main things I want to comment on just in regards to the applicant, if Matthew could, yeah, that direction, that's it. If Matthew could provide the slide with the understructure parking for me. Sorry, Peter and team, I'm still a little bit hung up on parking space number 14. I know you guys said that, you know, these are standardized parking spaces and this is a 24 foot travel lane. My concern that I expressed in my memo was a vehicle here backing out, not having a turn radius to back up and go forward. And while I recognize with the 24 feet coming way back, the turn could be made. I keep on thinking myself with a full size pickup truck that has a crew cab and someone with a large SUV parking there, I'm not sure I can adequately navigate that space. So just my thought here is maybe if the parking space is just designated as compact cars only, that it would at least give some warning to someone if they, you know, got in with a large vehicle. So that's just, it's just my thought on that. And then the other one is related to the housing affordability plan. One is I want to applaud the applicant for the work on the affordability plan. It's come a long way from both your staff comments and my comments. Number two related to that. Oh, I think also, you know, the the Berlin Housing Authority should be applauded also. One is, you know, I always speak firmly about the need for a third party doing the qualifications on the income. I always believed that local housing authorities are the best entity to do it. Believe it or not, I've done work in communities where housing authorities have said, no, we have no interest. So I applaud the housing authority for actually being interested in working with the applicant on that. The one comment I want to make on the housing plan is just I thank you for updating the sample calculations, the one through 10. But when I look at the zoning, I just, it's not a but. However, when I look at the zoning regulations, your zoning regulations specifically say that the 80% AMI be compliant with a dash 30G. And I think at the end of the day, you're getting at, you want to make sure that these deep restricted units can ultimately comply with a dash 30G. A dash 30G says the lesser of area area median income or state median income. And I know in your calculation sheet, you reference the state median income, but I'm not convinced that number is right. I was under the impression that the Hartford AMI was higher than the state AMI. So I just think you, the applicant may want to double check the state versus the Hartford AMI, in which one actually applies. Beyond that, I mean, I think the applicants at this point have done a substantial job, at least on my style or my comments and recommendations for changes. I do recognize that on the engineering side, there are much more complex issues than much of what I was dealing with. But I think they've done a tremendous job on addressing those issues. So thank you to the applicant. And once again, commission, if you have any questions for me, I am available.
We'll make sure we take a look at compliance with 830G. Thank you for that clarification.
I'm sorry, we're muted again. We keep muting because of feedback. This is Maureen speaking. I was hoping that perhaps Don Pollan could talk a little bit about the lot size question that Attorney Alter raised, as well as the discussions that we've had with regard to that, to give the commission a little bit of information with regard to the determination that they ultimately will have to make with regard to that.
Sure. I'd be pleased to. So, I mean, on that question, when I, so when Maureen asked me the question, I was kind of like, oh, I missed that. And then when I went back and read it, I was like, okay. And then I kind of stepped away and made myself read it again. And I kind of read those two provisions as being really separate and different. The first one is about eligibility for the adoption of a zone change. You need a minimum of 10 acres for you guys to consider placing the BTD on the ground, you know, to place it on the map. And the second one was purely a minimum lot size requirement, 10 acres. So then when you start thinking about both of those, you know, the first one conceptualizes you either need a lot of 10 acres or more, or you need two or more lots that total at least 10 acres. So instantly, you have a circumstance where you can have an assemblage of lots that are less than 10 acres approved as a BTD zone. And at the moment of approval, you instantly have nonconforming undersized lots. So let's say you had three three acre lots and one four acre lot, you know, for a total of 13 acres or whatever. All of a sudden, that whole BTD zone, BTD, yeah, is each of the lots on the moment of adoption are nonconforming because they now don't meet the 10 acre minimum lot size. So, and I'm, I think I understand how you got to this place. I think a lot of the time when we're writing regulations, going through that process, things make perfect sense in the moment. And it's not until something like this occurs where we're like, huh, what's going on there? The fact that this is an overlay, you know, I think there is some rationale, and I said it in my report, that the BTD should really have a minimum lot size of two acres, that they should mirror what was kind of under it and what what's under it and what was there. And that would eliminate this kind of confusion or issue. That being said, I think Peter's comments also kind of got to something else that maybe I I wasn't in tune with, but a commission concern over not having, you know, not wanting a bunch of two acre lots as part of a, you know, mixed use development. So in that sense, I think there might be a number, you know, if that is a concern, then maybe there might be a number between two acres and 10 acres that works because you're kind of implying it with you can assemble undersized lots into a 10 acre minimum. The other thing is maybe your 10 acre minimum was, you know, being kind of driven by this fear of spot zoning, and you felt it needed to be a certain size. But I think as an overlay zone and the way it's crafted, I wouldn't worry much about spot zoning. So maybe it's that 10 acre eligibility requirement that doesn't necessarily have to be there, that you guys can consider a reasonable zone change for an area for mixed use development. And if someone comes in just for a two acre site, then no, that, you know, that's not enough for a mixed use development. But if someone comes in with, you know, 7.8 acres or 12.6, then maybe it's suitable for the zone change. So I think there's ways to address it going forward. I understand Peter's need is more pressing for determination or answer on your guys' part. I'm not sure I feel as pressed as him. I guess, granted, I'm not him. So I'm not the applicant. I guess the other alternative is, you know, you could entertain a text amendment to address it now. You could give direction. You could, you know, just to say grant an approval on this application. And even after that approval, if they wanted to do smaller lots to carve out the convenience store or something, they could come back and request a text amendment from you. If maybe they had some idea that not, not that you're saying, yes, we'll do it, but maybe they, you know, have some confidence from you that it's at least something you'd entertain. So I think there is a way to clean up the reg. I'm not sure there's a direct solution right this moment, other than some direction. So.
Thank you very much. I think we've heard a lot of testimony tonight. We have a lot of stuff to take in and to go over. Commissioners. I think that that would be a very convenient to tell you the truth. Let me see. All right. So if we do the motion to table, we're going to be keeping the hearing open. And we'll be utilizing the extension time. And we'd like the applicants to defer and agree, although it's not necessary, you know, because of the COVID executive orders. But I think we needed the extension time to be secured.
We will, we will submit a letter with respect to the extension. And I would prefer to keep the public hearing open so that you can receive information and we can move forward with staff and consultants and submit that.
Yeah, we're like minded there, Mr. Attorney Alter. And I think that so too is Mr. Rogan.
Can anybody here, I'm sorry, we're getting major feedback right now for a moment. I think I'm going to ask, this is Maureen speaking, I'm going to ask Mr. Rogan to repeat himself.
Yes, so I will make a motion to table and continue the public hearing until our next zoning meeting, which is?
One week.
Is that going to be enough?
Defer to the commission.
Commissioners, do we want to revisit this in one week? Or do we need a little extra time?
We, Madam Chairman, we could, I don't think we can make enough progress in one week to take up the commission's time again.
Okay, fair enough. So the meeting after?
It would be the third week in March, which would be.
Getting there. Hold on one second. March, the next meeting is March 4. The meeting after that is scheduled for March 18.
March 18.
Yep, so I will make the motion to table and continue the public hearing until March 18.
Okay, terrific. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Further discussion on that. Do you roll call?
I think it's appropriate.
Yep, okay, roll call. First off, so I.
Commissioner Joycey.
I.
Commissioner Rogan.
I'm.
Commissioner Sigma.
Hi.
Commissioner Wolman.
Hi.
Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
And Commissioner Biella.
Hi.
Terrific. Thank you. All right. So that would be for the public hearings. That would be item A and B. And also now to the old business, I items A and B are one and the same. So that would be concluding the meeting for this evening. And I'd like to have a motion for adjournment.
So.
Okay, well, we'll give it to Mr. Sigma. And the second is Mr. Rogan. And the time noted for the file is 10:10 PM. Okay, thank you, commissioners. I know there's a lot of information to take in. And we'll just we'll just hit the books again. And we'll see you all back here in a week. All right, not this particular applications, but the commissioners. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.